This is the zoning board of adjustment. This is a conditional use application review to construct a new structure to support a gas station, snack bar restaurant, retail and administrative offices at 3171 Ethan Allen Highway. The way we're going to try to run this at this time is we're going to let the applicant do a presentation. The zoning board is going to be able to ask questions, make comments. I'm going to request that the audience at this time waits until the presentation is done and the zoning board is done asking questions and then we'll open up to the public for everybody else to weigh in with their concerns. If we can do that, that would be wonderful. And we'll start with...
How about the group swearing?
And, oh, yeah. And Darrell?
Yeah?
Can you take the swearing sheet and say that so then we'll have whoever is with Darrell's? You don't want to do it? Oh, man. Fine. I thought you were supposed to be the staff.
I'm the lawyer, though.
Okay. So at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read this and we'll have, like I said, we'll have the applicant do his presentation with whoever he needs help him. We'll have them, as they state their name, they will be sworn in. So before you speak, state your name. It says, "I hereby swear that the evidence I give under the cause under consideration shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth under the pains and penalties of perjury." So we'll start with Dave.
I, Dave Marshall, civil engineering associate, so swear.
My name is Stephen Leo. I swear. I'm from Antonio Leo Architects. I swear.
Just make sure you speak loud enough for everybody to hear.
I'm John Anderson. I'm the lawyer for RL Valley. I'm not intending to speak. I'm here to answer questions, but I so swear.
Otto Hanson with RL Valley, I so swear.
Jeremy Owens, landscape architect with TJ Boyle Associates, and I so swear.
Okay. Group, then we'll have you start going through what your plans are.
Sure. Absolutely. Before we get started, to talk a little bit about the application materials itself, I wanted to have Otto Hanson describe RL Valley's ideas for the project and then we can get into the details of what the application requirements are in support of the zoning board's review of the application.
Sure. As I mentioned, I'm Otto Hanson with RL Valley. Thank you for the opportunity to present the conditional use permit application study. As you may know, we've been trying to, Spear's been trying to sell this property for a number of years. We have been working with them for several years to try to accomplish that. We, in the meantime, the air lot has kind of sat vacant and has continued to fall into disrepair. We'd like to change that. We found a solution that we feel accomplishes that. We feel that we've come up with a proposal for a mixed-use facility that includes a gas station, restaurant, cafe, a commercial farm stand and retail. What we are presenting is a application of a collaborative process that has happened over months. We've tried to take the input gained from the earlier meeting. We've looked to the input from the local officials and tried to come up with a plan that accomplishes that. We designed our facility inside and out to fit the community, the character and the scale of the community and selling the products that Charlotteers demand. We hope to elevate the appearance of this location to what it should be, which is the gateway to Charlotte. This collaborative process is a process that we've been through a number of times. Several years ago, we went through a similar process in Middlebury. Last year, we went through a similar process in Johnson. In all of those cases, we met with some skepticism and we worked very hard to come up with solutions that incorporated their ideas. In those two cases especially, we've ended up in a place where the community, the town, the officials have been very happy with what we've been able to build for their community. We are waiting for the final guidance from AOT. Preliminary feedback from them was positive on the developments at this corner, particularly because we are relocating some of the curb cuts, eliminating a number of curb cuts and keeping those curb cuts spread further away from the intersection of Carrick Road and Route 7. So the team here will kind of walk you through the application as we've submitted it, talk about the elements. Joining us tonight, Stephen Leo. He's with Antonio Leo Architects. He's been very involved with the building design and the aesthetic part of this. Jeremy Owens from TJ Boyle. He's been very involved in the landscape architecture and the lighting plan to make sure that it fits with the community of Charlotte. Dave Marshall, of course, is civil engineering. He's been responsible for developing the plans for the site work, for the intersections, for meeting all of the zoning requirements for this location. And John Anderson is our attorney and I hope you stay very quiet. Dave?
Thank you, Otto. Things to keep in mind in regards to the permitting process here in town, there's basically two major components beyond state permits that are necessary and access permits either from the agency of transportation or from the town itself. The planning commission is responsible for providing what's called a site plan approval. So they're going to look very heavily at what is happening within the boundary lines of the property. And then the zoning board, not to belittle certain things, but they often are looking at what the impacts are to the community, what happens, what the impacts will be for the abiding property owners or those who live near the proposed project, so that they will be looking at a more global outside of the actual site plan. But there are overlaps. The overlaps likely often are lighting and traffic, so that if you were going to both the planning commission meeting and the zoning board meetings, you would actually hear the same testimony you would get. So in this particular case, we have initially gone through what's called a sketch plan hearing with the planning commission. And that's the effort or the goals are to review a project on a very preliminary basis and to gain input so that the project can get headed in the right direction. And that was very useful in regards to the planning commission meeting. We had late fall where, again, we had a site visit and we took information out of that particular meeting and changed the plan to integrate many of those ideas. So that's a little bit of the background of ultimately what we have done and where we'll be going. So there will be many things that you might want to talk about inside the site and there are going to be some things that, there will be a time and place for that with the planning commission. For this particular meeting, the conditional use review, that's an extra level of review that's necessary for certain types of land uses. And there are three out of the four that are associated with this project that have that particular conditional use requirement associated with it. When you mix multiple permitted uses and what's called conditional uses into one project, all of them get reviewed as a conditional use. And that's ultimately what we have here. Otto mentioned that we've got basically the redevelopment of the gas station. So that's the primary component of this particular application. We've got a cafe/restaurant that's proposed. That will be a significant portion of the square footage within the building. We've got a commercial farm stand that basically promotes the selling of agricultural products. And then we also have a transit facility. Right now, the property serves as the hub for the GMTA button and we're basically looking to be able to continue that particular component of use on the land as part of this application. So within the conditional use review, there's five components that are integral aspects of the zoning board's work in reviewing the application. And the first one is the capacity of the existing or planned communities, facilities and services. So for example, what services do the town, does the town of Charlotte provide and what does this project have as far as impacts on those services? The second item is going to be character of the area affected. This is where a lot of, a lot of the testimony will be tonight. So we will be talking about, again, what's being proposed and how that particular idea tries to fit within the character of Charlotte. The third item is transportation, traffic impacts. And there's not going to be a lot of discussion on that. I hope that doesn't disappoint anybody, but the important thing to understand is right now there's an application pending before the agency of transportation for permission for access to Route 7. And within that, there's a lot of technical as well as safety review. And before we spend a lot of the zoning board's time talking about something that might actually change based on their recommendations, we are going to ask for a continuance of this hearing, which will allow us to come back to traffic at a later time. So with that being the understanding on the third item, the fourth item talks about, bear with me while I pull that up, is the bylaws in effect at the time. So that basically says that the zoning board can't give you, can't give an applicant a permit or permission to move forward with their project without an understanding that the project itself has a high likelihood of being able to comply with the town's laws. And then lastly, item five is the use of renewable energy resources. So in this particular case, communities handle this differently. Some communities will say, "Don't put a big tall building in to cast shade on my property." We don't have those issues here in Charlotte. In this particular case, the town has used this as an opportunity to make sure that however the site is designed, that it can be as energy efficient as possible. So those will be the five major things that are the legs that a conditional use application is reviewed on. Now, in Charlotte, there's a couple of extra things that have been thrown in beyond those by statutory requirements. It may include conformance with the town plan. So there's good discussion in regards to how the project meets certain components of the town plan. And then there's also what they call performance standards. That's a very black and white end or portion of the land use regulations that want to make sure that, for example, on a manufacturing facility, that the vibrations of whatever operations are going are going to adversely affect the neighborhood. We don't really quite count those issues, but nonetheless, it's still something that the applicant is required to address. So those are really the things that we'll be talking about tonight and we'll take them from the top and work our way down through as part of that process. So when we talk about impacts on the municipality, what are the services and how do we work within the town to make sure that this project doesn't create undue adverseness? So we sent out requests for information to each one of the department heads to get more input on their feelings and concerns in regards to the redevelopment of this particular intersection area. So when it came back from the highway department, Junior Lewis asked us to make sure that we recognize that Route Road, that's currently, if we were to look at this particular site plan, and unfortunately, probably the majority of you can't see it, but if in your mind eye, where Rise and Shine currently services, or their driveway comes out onto Route Road, it's old Route 7. That particular road is called a class four road and that basically means that the town has no obligation to plow it, no obligation to maintain it. They happen to plow it in order to basically bring the sand in and out of the facility, of the sand and salt pile facility, but nonetheless, Junior said, "Make sure nobody parks on that road and that there won't be any plowing." In this particular case, the applicant has indicated that as part of their circulation plan for moving both passenger vehicles and primarily large trucks through this particular area, that they will be responsible for the maintenance of the roadway of that portion of the road.
Question. The trucks going in and out, in and out from Route Road, that part of the road is gravel.
So there's still a historical portion that runs from Churchill Road intersection to the south, almost right up to the Rise and Shine building, which is still paved? And then from those points south, it is gravel?
I'm just wondering what effect that trucks are going to have during a 90-degree corner coming in and out of that.
We will end up having to pave that in order to basically protect that surface.
And one question, lawyer. Was the comments from the town departments in your materials?
Two of them were. Most recently, we sent some over to Darrell to basically get them in the record, but unfortunately, you haven't had the opportunity to that. So you'll have to believe me in...
They're on the...
They're posted online.
They're on the website.
But they're not in the printed stuff?
There's only two of them. That's correct. So relative to...
Right now, there is no stop sign on the end of Route Road.
That is, that is my understanding.
Okay. Keep going? No? Yep.
Okay. Fire department. Fire department wanted to make sure that there was adequate fire suppression in the building and historically, there was a fire pond that was constructed. It's the one that we drive by on Churchill Road and you can see, look down on. And in this particular case, they've asked for a dry hydrant to be installed at that particular pond. So there will be some maintenance as far as dredging out the pond, basically facilitating proper water over the intake, but that's something that the applicant is willing to do in order to support the emergency response requirements for this particular project. We did hear from the recreation department. They didn't indicate any issues. We did hear from the school. They didn't indicate that there were any issues. And we also heard from the town administrator who politely said, "Not at this time. Any issues. We'll find out as, as more information on the application moves forward." But nonetheless, the...
Is that the zone administrator or the town?
That would be the town.
Okay.
So out of, at least on the town services and things, it looked like they were all manageable in regards to what the applicant was willing to do to basically mitigate concerns of those particular department heads. And that's primarily most of the services that are provided by the town today. Unlike bigger communities that have bigger taxes, we both benefit from lower taxes but also smaller number of services. So that being the background, we felt very comfortable in regard to item one of the conditional use application relative to the applicant's impacts on municipal services. Item two goes back to character of the area. So in this particular case, we've seen pictures, the application document that if you wanted to come in and look is double-sided and all that information's right there. We burdened the board with having to go through all of those things, but in this particular case, what we want to do is at least touch the highlights for you relative to the character of the area. The application does include a number of pictures of the existing conditions. Again, in your mind's eye, you can see the gas station, basically a brick building 34 feet high, the secondary building on the Sams, as well as the office that's in the back. That's about 4,200 square feet in area, smaller in height, but...
What was the gas station, the existing?
The area?
Yeah.
What height?
The area.
I didn't tell you that. It's 2,400 square feet. So ultimately, the reason the chair has asked for the areas of the existing was both to fill the record, but also at the same time, what ultimately we're going to have on the site is less square footage of buildings than what exists out there today. So we're proposing a 5,000 square foot building. There's a little bit over 6,400 square feet of existing structures that would be removed in favor of the new structure. So when we talk about that new structure, that's going to house the cafe/restaurant and the retail components for the gasoline station, as well as the farm stand and what's allowed as a gasoline station use, additional retail, the question we posed at the sketch plan hearing was, "What do you want?" Well, unfortunately, we didn't quite get as many responses as we got, but we did hear one person that said, "You know, it's got to at least not stand out as something different than what we already have." So they latched on to the RL Valley facility in Middlebury. And that basically was a colonial building that was retrofitted to basically provide those same level or same character of services inside the building. That being the background, Stephen's office took a look at the character of what is out there today. And he's got a number of pictures of buildings that are up and down the Route 7 corridor as well as in the West Village, as far as what's out there today for those major structures that make up the character of this part of town.
Did, did you have the calculations for the, for the maximum lot coverage?
Yes. I believe they're on the second or third page of the plan sheets. That was the bottom left-hand corner. Frank, if you go up the plan sheets on the... She, C 1.10. So it doesn't have the square footage, it just has the... So Stephen's stepping through, this is actually the Middlebury facility in which it is the, you know, classic colonial farmhouse type of platform structure, two stories, has porch component. And again, that seemed to have been ultimately, you know, there was obviously some pain getting there, but ultimately, as far as Middlebury is concerned, they, our understanding is that they're happy with, with ultimately what ended up this particular facility. So if you want to step your way through a couple of those or you want to talk about it?
The photos? Or...
Let's talk about existing conditions and do we have the rest of the photos as far as other buildings in Charlotte? Yeah. Yeah.
Dave, before you get too far along, that's the, that's the facility on Court Street?
Yes.
Okay. And I checked, I just Googled "my fresh cafe" because that's what your representative's going to look like, or that's going to be the style?
Restaurant.
A restaurant?
Yes.
And that facility was the one that popped up?
Okay.
So is that the facility that we can look to as representative or not?
I'll have to let Otto into that.
As for the restaurant component?
Yeah, because you say a "my fresh cafe" style restaurant, where can we see something like that?
So Middlebury does not have "my fresh cafe." Middlebury has a franchise food program called Omato's.
Right.
We have a proprietary restaurant brand of our own called "my fresh cafe." We have it installed in Johnson, Vermont, at our newest facility, Plainfield, Vermont, Champlain, New York, Raybrook, New York, and Plattsburgh, New York. I think that's the five locations that we currently have the "my fresh cafe" located in.
Okay. So I guess, I'm just trying to understand, if we looked at the ones in Johnson and Plainfield, that would be representative of what you're proposing here?
The menu in Johnson and Plainfield is consistent with what we'd be offering at, in this location. Do you have any photos of either of those? On my laptop in my truck, I do, or on my phone, but I do not have the photos prepared. And this building that we're seeing here on the screen, is this a, this was, I'm assuming an existing structure, not one that was built by Maple Fields, correct?
That's my understanding.
Yes, that is, was it actually a historic building at one point and we had kind of restored the building and then added on to the building in a subsequent application, I believe it was three or four years ago.
Are these photos in what we have for paperwork?
No. We'll make them available.
Make them available, please. Anything you're putting up here that we don't have, I'd like to have a copy of.
No, it's on Darrell's machine, so we're all set there.
And it sounds like what you're drawing our attention to here is really the building itself. It's not sort of what's inside. In other words, that it's not, what's inside that building is not representative necessarily.
Yes. At this point, when we talk about character, it's more as you drive by and what do you see?
Got it.
What will we see in the future and is that consistent with the character of what we have as far as the building? So this happened to be an existing facility that had some of the vernacular motif that ultimately we'll be talking about, but we also have other photos of buildings within the town of Charlotte, Route 7 corridor, as well as in the West Village, so that we can build at least a foundation for discussion of what is the character and how we move from that to the next.
So, and you're trying to establish a point around the architectural vernacular that would be, that would be in use here?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Excuse me. You do have mockups of a proposed design that I have posted?
Yes. Yeah. We'll get there.
Okay.
Right now, we're just building the foundation on existing conditions. So we'll just quickly go through these particular ones. This is a couple of, couple of homes that are located along Route 7. So this is up by the Norda Farm. This is our classic highway building. This is the old Williams House. This is the one a little bit further out by the Berry Farm. And this is the wildflower structure currently being renovated. This is the children's center as we get back into Horace's Village. That's our post office, fire department, the town hall, we're in today, right now, and the library. And, oh, that's the old affectionately Katz Building. That's at the intersection of Upper Churchill Road and Route 7. So what we take out of that is we have a lot of clapboard, farmhouse looks, multiple stories, some one-story, one-and-a-half-story, two-story, with and without porches. And out of all that, coupled with at least some of the requests that came out of the sketch plan hearing, we then developed a design for this particular structure. So we'll let Stephen talk a little bit about his design process and what currently is proposed within the application package.
The renderings were on this one, too? Sorry?
Renderings are within the plan set, yes.
There you go. There you go.
So within the application package, if you had the opportunity to come into the office to look at it, as well as look at it online, there are a number of different views that have been generated to identify what one would experiment in regard to the structure of this. So Stephen, why don't you talk a little bit about the building?
Hello, everybody. My name is Stephen from Antonio Leo Architects. We're located in Westchester, New York, and we've been working with RL Valley for about 20 years now, creating, helping them create their new sites and renovating their existing sites. Our process for each project, we start out examining the existing context, the character of the neighborhood, and then from there, we try to come up with a design that isn't harmony with the existing neighborhood and community. We don't want to go and create things that stand down creep's foot on. And if you look at RL Valley's portfolio in each different town, you'll see that each one is unique in the sense that it is in harmony with its surrounding context. So our proposed design for Charlotte is a two-story structure, similar to what's out there now. We're using two different types of platform siding, decorative siding, similar to what's in this building.
Why a two-story structure?
Well, the first floor is the retail space. The second floor is purely aesthetics. There's no staircase to go up. It doesn't serve any function. It's just to keep the harmony of the community. Because as we, excuse me, looked in the previous photos, a lot of the buildings in this community, the houses and commercial spaces are one and a half, two stories, so we wanted to keep the context the same. We're using residential-style windows with decorative accents inside, similar to what's behind you guys here, again, keeping with the residential feel. We have 30-year architectural shingles on the roof, on the fueling islands as well. And then if you can see in these photos over here, there's solar panels on both the fueling island and the building's roof. There's bike racks around, new landscaping, which they'll get into. You can see the charging stations for electric vehicles as well.
The canopies on the, on the fuel pumps, what's the, I'm assuming there's some kind of a regulation on the size and height of them? What is, what is the, what are the regulations on that? To know what the, what the minimum height would be and what the minimum width would be and what they look like?
I believe that the deck height of the standard canopy is around 17 feet.
But these look taller than that in the drawings.
And certainly, it's, it's difficult to get the perspective in a computer drawing.
It's going to be 17 feet to the, to the peak?
Yeah.
No.
To the deck, to the bottom.
Oh, to the bottom.
Is that, that's a requirement? It's certainly practical for being able to get a vehicle underneath that is a It's, it's, uh, certainly practical for being able to get a vehicle underneath that, that is a high-box vehicle or, or some track, uh, some trailer.
And then, uh, lastly around the building is a covered canopy, uh, so pedestrians walking up, you're sheltered from the elements, et cetera. That's the, that's the design.
Can you put, can you just put back up the picture that you had of the Middlebury one?
Yeah, sure.
So we can sort of jump back and forth between these two?
Any specific photo or?
Well, that one's fine, there was another, there's another one, keep going, there you go. I mean, why is this, as an architect, explain to me why that feels different to me than what you're proposing here?
So your question was, why does that feel different?
Yeah, because, I mean, what I'm seeing, and I've got my little pointer here, I'm seeing, I'm sorry. I did have it there, you know, oh, it doesn't show on the screen, it doesn't reflect on the screen.
I'm pointing this out.
Yeah, anyway, I mean, this just seems like, the other thing had some scale and proportion to it as, as a building. This, to my mind, just strikes me as a box.
Looks like a hotel.
Yeah, I mean, this strikes me as a box compared to the thing in Middlebury, and I want you to explain to me why, why I'm feeling that way.
Can we send those images in a whole screen?
We're gonna.
Sorry.
Uh, if I may, uh, part of the difference between the two facilities is that the Middlebury facility actually was, was a, a house, and there was an expansion done, so the, the 5,000 square feet of space in the building is actually broken into two sections. An old main house section, and then the addition which comes off at a perpendicular to, um, to the, to the old space.
No, I understand, but I mean, as I look at this, I see what I think most people do receive as an old, Vermont-style building. And what I'm seeing on the other, it's a computer-generated diaphragm thing, doesn't look anywhere near like that, and I want you to tell me why. What's the difference?
Um, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, they're pretty similar, it has the same, uh, facial on the bottom, uh, same 30-year architectural shingle tile. The wood framing details are going to be pretty similar, um, so.
Is the roof pitch the same?
The slope of it, I'm not sure to be, to be honest.
Well, it doesn't sound like the intention was to mirror the Middlebury site as much as created design that incorporated as much of the architectural vernacular as possible. Am I, am I understanding correctly?
I think that's a fair representation.
Okay, so we should look at Middlebury as an example of a type of architecture, rather than
Similar neighborhood?
A footprint that would be duplicated.
Similar neighborhoods, but the modern.
Okay, but your, your point is around sort of the, the feel of the overall.
Right, I mean, this, this fundamentally feels, it just doesn't feel like the other building, and I'm curious whether it's a function of scale of the components of it, the architectural features of the other one, I mean, it just, it just doesn't come close to my mind.
I, I get what you're saying, well, one is also digital and one has been built, so that also.
No, I get it, that's a big, that's a big piece of it.
Yes, yes.
But I mean, if you were to do a digital version of the one in Middlebury, would it look different?
No, the same piece of that model, so the 3D model pieces are identical pieces of this one.
Does the Middlebury project have a canopy?
Uh, yes.
Are you talking about the fuel canopy?
Yes. Fuel canopy.
No, it does not.
Okay.
I, I guess what it boils down to is the one in Middlebury has this rambling kind of feel to it. You know, it was an old building that you expanded on. You know what I mean? So it sort of sits in there, because it has a rambling kind of feel to it there. And this doesn't, and I, I, maybe that's, maybe that's my issue. Okay.
On your, on your thing here, on your pictures, is, there's a picture of the, uh, of the signs, is that going to be the location of the signs?
So there are two signs, uh, proposed. One, within the town of, uh, Charlotte, Charlotte's land use regulations allow, is allowed to be very close to the property line, which still is quite a ways off of the edge of the highway. Uh, and then there's a second sign, which is more a directory sign as far as listing the, uh, businesses within a building. That is required to be further set back off of both Churchill Road as well as, uh, Route 7. And, uh, so.
Dave, can you show, can you show us on the plan?
Sure. So there'll be a price sign, which will be closer to the highway, and then there'll be.
I'm on eight, I'm on eight two point O. On the left, yeah.
So what that particular one shows, Stuart, I can't use my pointer either. So, uh, uh, the sign on the right is what we call the price sign, and that basically, uh, advertises the price of both the gasoline as well as the diesel. And this is allowed to be right up on the property line, uh, but that's how far the property line is set off of both of these roadways. So there's a lot of green space that will occur between the two. And then this is the, um, what I call the directory sign, or the business sign, that basically identifies the, uh, businesses within the structure. And, uh, that's.
Both of those are facing Churchill Road.
That's correct. So anyways, to answer the question, is there anything else on that?
Yeah, I mean, fast forward into the future, and I emphasize the future, I mean, assuming you were going to, you got an approval of some kind, I mean, would we see an actual architectural drawing of what you're going to build as opposed to this prototype? Con, this is, in my view, is a concept. This doesn't look like what's going to actually happen. And I guess that's the problem, is I'm seeing this as a concept, I'm seeing Middlebury as a reality. And are you going to be able to at some point, you know, bring, merge those two together so that we can actually see what's going to happen?
Yep, there will be a point in time where we take the concept and basically bring them further along as far as detail to ultimately architectural construction plans. And as somewhere along the line, you're saying, where's the detail that I can actually feel better about relative to this structure? So that I can understand that the character of Middlebury might be bleeding through into this one also.
Well, yeah, because when you look at all the pictures of the buildings up and down, I mean, they've been there for a while, they have a certain, there's certain architectural details to it that I just don't see in a concept.
And I think.
And I think that's going to be your threshold fundamentally.
And I think that just the model itself doesn't avail itself to providing that level of detail that we're used to seeing visually within a standard photograph. So your point is, is that how do, does the applicant ultimately demonstrate that the narrative concepts translate into the proposed constru, proposed structure?
Yeah, because we've got to figure out the character of the area, and I can't do it on that, right?
So that goes back to perhaps the applicant's ability to provide supplemental, whether it be narrative or typical sections, something that is going to give you, um, the ability to connect what you do see in Middlebury to what ultimately is proposed here. Fair? Okay. So with every building project also comes landscaping and light, um, Jeremy Owens from TJ Boyle, I'm sorry, John.
Before we go on from that, we need to define with you how that would be done in a transparent way, so that you know we can't have a private discussion with, with the board, we, it all has to be open. And it would be really good to get feedback as to what you want. I heard you say, you know, you'd like more rambling stuff, and then I heard you say I'd like more detail. Those may be the same or different, but we need to figure out, it would be great to do it tonight, before we leave tonight, how we're going to have that process so we have the discussion.
Yeah.
In a way that, yeah.
So we'll come back to that?
Exactly.
Okay, so, uh, again, with every building also comes, uh, landscaping components as well as lighting. Uh, Jeremy, Jeremy Owens from TJ Boyle, uh, prepared both landscaping plans and the lighting plan. And they are, they have to be integrated also, because as the trees grow, they have an impact on where you place lighting and how effective it is. So in this particular case, we'll have Jeremy talk, uh, briefly about the concepts here that basically will tie the building into the surrounding, um, landscape.
So Jeremy Owens worked with TJ Boyle since, we, uh, have done some work for Aral Valley for several years now. One of the first things that we did for this project is we looked at the land use regulations to find out whether or not there are any specific requirements for landscape. The only real specific requirement that we did find is that the plant, uh, species should, um, work hand-in-hand with a publication that UPM released, um, two or over 15 years ago called Landscape Plants of Vermont. So we used the plants that are in that publication as sort of our palette. We didn't want to go overboard with the plantings, um, there's certain kind of desires that you have when you have a retail space. You don't want to screen the entire, um, site from everywhere, but also you want to have some amount of presence and character in the community. So what we've done is we proposed, uh, street trees along US Route 7 in this view, north is to my right, or to your right. Um, so street trees along Route 7, um, those would actually be located on the Tranz property. I believe that we, uh, there would be an agreement in place to be able to do that as part of this development. As you can see, it's a pretty wide ride of ways, so, um, there should be plenty of green trees there to stay. The other thing that we look at is, um, how much room do the trees need in order to grow healthy growth over a period of 10, 20, 30, 40 years? So the spacing is about 35 feet, which is, um, similar to, to other street tree planting requirements that you find in the area. Some people have less, but if you talk to, uh, tree wardens, they'll tell you they want more so that the trees can be healthy as they grow. Um, we've done some screening with, uh, some blue spruce and some white spruce, um, on the north side, so there's some screening in Churchill Road. Um, and as much as we can kind of fit in for some residential properties here without interfering with some overhead power lines that are running around the site. So that's another one of the strengths that we have to look at. And then we have some trees around the backside of, of the parking lot as well as on the south side. So we're looking at red maypoles, um, like I said, the spruce, some white, uh, which kind of grow like an evergreen tree, but, um, do lose their leaves. And then we have some birch trees along the, uh, east side. On the south, we have some hackberry. All these plants should be able to grow healthy, given the site, the amount of root space that they have, so, um, in a nutshell, that's the landscaping plan. The lighting plan. How do you, do you?
Want me to pull it up?
Oh, there it is. So lighting plan, um, again, just like with the landscaping plan, we looked at the land use regulations to see if there are any specific requirements. We didn't find a lot of specific requirements, but we did see some general requirements for character, um, looking for full cutoff fixtures, which is actually an outdated term, but, um, the new terms are generally the same. Uh, there's not really height requirements, but there are some, um, requirements for not spreading light on the neighboring properties as well as trying to be as energy efficient as possible. So the lighting plan that we have uses four types of fixtures. Um, there are site fixtures around the outside, and those are, in order to reduce the number of poles that we would need, those are proposed at 20 feet in height. It's a little bit taller than the light poles that you see outside here, um, we have a little bit more of an area to light. But that extra height allows us to broadcast the light a little bit further so that we don't have to put in more light poles in order to light the site. Therefore, increasing efficiency, but also reducing the number of lights that you have. Second type of light that we have are pedestrian fixtures. There are two of those that are pointed away from the building, um, I believe that part of this project is, is it CCTA?
GM Greenmount.
GM, Greenmount Transit, um, so there would be bus stops, so we have 15-foot fixtures there. Um, and then we have canopy fixtures underneath the, uh, the fuel island, um, both of the fuel islands, those are flush, um, they don't protrude. And then we also have some canopy fixtures around the porch that's around the building, those are also flush. All fixtures are LED, other than the two pedestrian fixtures which face away from the building, all the other fixtures are directed onto, into the site. Full cutoff fixtures, the, the correct term now doesn't really apply, but they call it backlight, uplight, and, and glare. Uh, this has zero uplight, so it's essentially the same thing as full cutoff. So, um, the land use regulations are a little out of date in that sense. But like I said, they're LED, so they're high efficiency. Also, um, efficiency Vermont gives rebates for, um, efficient fixtures that qualify. All but the two pedestrian fixtures qualify, and one thing that we would like to do is to make sure to get all of them to qualify so that we can get a rebate. So we are looking for some different pedestrian fixtures that would work for this site.
So what's up with, uh, so the canopy that our lights on that?
So those, uh, LED lights, um, mounted so that they appear flush, all of the drivers and everything is up inside of the canopy.
From underneath? They're, they're underneath and they shine down?
They're underneath and they shine down, yes. So it's a little bit low resolution, but you can kind of see some red, orange, and blue on this plan. Essentially, the red light is the sort of brightest area, orange is where it's getting dimmer, and light blue is where it's the dimmest. So you can see, if you follow the light blue line, it pretty much starts to cover just the parking area, and in some cases, a little bit behind the parking area because the fixtures are actually in the grass. Um, we are coming off-site at the, um, curb cuts, just a little bit to help light those. But we haven't had any fixtures, um, that aren't on the property line, or, or that are over the property line. The closest we have would be over here to try to get some light into the entrance area, so that cars pulling off don't have to go through a dark area before entering a light area on the site, so.
Is there any lighting on signage?
Um, not that I know of, I haven't seen.
They're likely busy. We understand that obviously the lights need to go off when the business is closed. And, uh, it will likely be downlit in order to basically minimize any glare coming up from what otherwise we see ground-mounted lights that come up and blind you as you drive by. Uh, we very much would like to try to avoid that as part of the, the lighting.
So both, both signs would have lighting from above, pointing down and back at the sign, is what you're saying?
Uh, I think that's the preferred route right now.
I'm curious, do you have your sheet L3 on that?
Are all of the.
There's another cache in the planning conditions.
So what the board is looking at right now is a detail sheet that shows the specific, uh, character, uh, of shape and the luminance of the proposed fixtures. Some that, hopefully we'll get that up on the screen shortly for you. In the meantime, is there a specific question, Stuart, that you want to?
Yeah, because around the perimeter, I'm looking at your, what is it, L2? And it talks about the style A lights around the perimeter, I looked at L3, I just want to make sure I'm seeing the right things. Because there's, there's several different styles of lights. There you go, that's it. Okay. The one down at the lower left, the lower right, pardon me, right where your cursor is, is that the one that surrounded the margin? Around the edge of the project?
Yes, that is the one that's around the edge of the project.
Okay.
And it's basically a low-profile fixture. Essentially, it's as flat as can be. You can choose a different fixture that's boxier and bigger. In this case, we decided to go for the minimum that was needed in order to, to, to emit the light and not necessarily have a large shape.
It's basically a big floodlight. I gather from, I'm just getting a sense of this, it's, it's basically just going to illuminate a large area of soft light, that's the idea?
I don't know exactly the height of these. So twenty feet gets us a little bit more broadcast, actually reduces the brightness. The higher it is, essentially, the more the light spreads out and doesn't reflect as much, and also, and it reduces the number of structures.
Sure. The image on the upper left is sort of a cross-section view of that fixture sitting on a pole. Is that correct?
You're talking about this right here?
Yeah, is that what we should be?
This fixture down here, on the bottom right, is actually slimmer than this graphic that you see up here.
Okay, but it would be mounted on a pole like that, that's sort of the idea, seventeen?
That's, that's right.
Is it seventeen?
It's twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
So, and that would be from the ground, so we would have, we don't have curb all the way around the parking lot, and so you want to be able to protect the pole.
Right.
So we will have raised foundations, bases, and so the distance from the ground to the mounting, the height of the structure is going to be twenty feet.
Okay.
Pardon me, so if somebody's driving along Route 7 and they look at the project, are they going to be able to see sort of the, for lack of a better word, the underside of that light?
Yeah, technically, they'd be able to see the underside of any of the lights, no matter what the height is, unless it was below the level of the high. But yes, you'd be able to see that. That being said, if I go back to the plan. So this is the closest fixture, but there are no other sight lighting fixtures until you get to over here. So we don't have any fixtures other than here to help light this area. We don't have fixtures along this side. And like I said, we have two pedestrian-style fixtures in front of the building.
And Dave, what are your proposed hours of operation?
The application talks about twenty-four hours a day.
So we, these are beyond twenty-four hours?
Yes.
So this is the pedestrian-style fixture here. So it's a little bit different, a little bit not ornate here. And that would be mounted at fifteen feet high.
So you have twenty feet of lights on that. I guess that's the southern side. If you could go back to that other diagram, where the diesel canopy is, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
So, so to the left-hand side on the, around the curve there, there's four of the A lights. Those are the?
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, and that's, that's illuminating. It looks like if that's the diesel canopy, that's going to be trucks that are going to be in those striped lines, correct?
That's my understanding of that.
Trucks are there to fuel, and presumably, the lights are there for the trucks that would park there, because the trucks can't park in front of the smaller building.
Yes, and you got to remember with a truck, they have the potential to block the light. So you don't want to have a safety issue where you have somebody trying to park their truck, and some other person trying to walk to or from their truck, and then not being able to see them, so.
But if they do want to park, if somebody's driving a truck, they want to park, and they want to go into Mike Fresh Cafe and get something to eat, they would be parking there, in that area.
That's my understanding.
Do you have a distance from the, from the diesel pumps to the, to Route 7?
I don't know offhand if that's something.
Well, I'm just wondering if a, if a truck pulls in and goes to fuel up, is the back of that truck going to be in Route 7?
Dave, you'd probably be the best person to answer.
Frank, your last statement was, I'm sorry.
If a truck pulls up to the diesel pump, is the back of there a fifty-three-foot truck in Route 7?
Oh, in Route 7? We hadn't really envisioned that being the way that they would be coming into the site. We had envisioned much of these turning movements coming in off of Route 7, which can, we specifically designed the location of the canopy so that it wouldn't be blocking other passenger vehicle circulation patterns. Looking at this at scale, it would appear that it would not be an issue as far as hanging out in Route 7.
Frank, the front of the truck is going to, it would be pulling in with the front of the truck?
I'm, I'm wondering if a truck happened to come in?
Come into that.
And come in Route 7 and came in. Now, if a truck comes in from Route 7's side, is it going to be blocking part of the gas pumps?
The answer is no. So we looked at that specifically, Frank, but I think what we'd like to do is get back to you as a proper answer for anybody coming in from Route 7 and where the rear end of the vehicle will be.
Okay, and since we're talking traffic patterns here, the, the CCTA bus or Greenmount Transit bus, why would you propose to have it be in front of the station and turn that nice sharp corner and pull between two sides of parked cars?
At this point, based on the frequency, we thought that was a reasonable balance in regards to conflicts. We modeled that particular largest bus that GMTA has to basically move through the site and basically can do that. So we felt comfortable with that situation.
Tom's a good driver.
So focusing back on lighting for a second, has your firm done any of the projects in any of the gas stations along 7 from Burlington down to Middlebury?
In terms of lighting design, I don't, I have a personal, between Middlebury and Burlington, we've done other fuel canopy, gas station lighting designs, including for RL Valley.
Let me say that Mr. Stewart used the term floodlights, and these are, you know, lighting has come a huge distance since people have talked about floodlights. So we'd really like to show you what the lights might look like, and I think what we would do is try to identify, locate a place that you could go, either that we own or between here and Burlington, that would give you an example of what these lights would look like.
The only caveat is that sight light that you saw is actually not the same as what we've done elsewhere, such as in Johnson for RL Valley. And we haven't made a change.
Or less intense?
It, it, I would say that it's kind of comparable. It depends on, the light fixtures actually aren't all that different from each other. It's kind of the way they look. But in particular, the reason that we changed is because the ones that we used in Johnson no longer qualify for Efficiency Vermont as being a rebate, so, or compatible for rebates with them. That was actually, I think, the last project of those particular fixtures that qualified. And by qualify, I mean the Design Lights Consortium, which is this nationwide group, actually looks at each of these fixtures and looks at the amount of energy they use and how much area they cover, and essentially is looking for how efficient is this light for what you get out of it? And if it reaches a certain threshold, then they'll include it on their list and it will qualify. And then Efficiency Vermont uses that list to determine whether or not you get a rebate for that fixture. That, what that actually does is it tends to push lights that broadcast more and are meant to be higher, because you get more efficiency out of them, and less the lower pedestrian lights, which is why we were having a little bit of a problem picking a pedestrian light that would also qualify on the Design Lights Consortium list. So we're still looking. I'm sure we'll find something. We'd like to be able to switch that out if we get the chance.
You know, we're, we're talking about the lights and the kind of illumination that they throw, and, you know, I think, I'd like to raise a question that has to do with the character of the area, and has to do with sort of what it is that's being illuminated. If these lights here, twenty feet high, are illuminating a, an area for fueling and parking for large trucks, what's going to be visible because of lighting is a lot of large trucks when they're stopped for fueling or, or for somebody to get somebody in the, you know, in the facility? You know, I guess this is probably directed at, question directed at RL Valley. Is, I mean, how, how do you think that might affect the character of the area overall? And is that something that, you know, we might, we might see, a truck, an illuminated truck area at some of the other locations that you've built in the area? We can take a look at that. It seems to me that that's going to have an impact on the visual character of the area.
Especially since the lights are going to be on twenty-four hours a day.
So for that exact scenario, in this area, we don't have a similar layout to this. Probably the closest to that is, again, the location that we just built in Johnson. It's got some of the characteristics where the canopy is set away from, away from the building.
For fueling trucks.
Correct.
Same size trucks.
Correct. What we, what we do find is that in most of our locations with a similar setup to this, is we're, we're getting the bulk of our truck business during, during the daylight hours, and there's a lot of smaller trucks, box trucks, cement trucks, buses. We do a tremendous business with RL Valley Transit. That is a very large portion of the, of the business that's happening. As far as the big giant semi-trucks, we see more of those at our truck stop facilities like Fairhaven or Shankland, New York, where we have forty parking spaces and we have several fueling lanes for, for truck vehicles.
Right, but there's nothing stopping the biggest truck that rides on Route 7 from pulling in to get gas or coffee.
And as part of the transit facility, I gathered the trailer stays with the truck? You don't have like, in other words, sometimes I've seen where the, the driver will drop the trailer.
Of just, of the transit facility, so as part of the truck parking?
I just want to make sure if the trucks are involved in this transit facility.
The transit facility is for the buses, correct?
Yeah, that was, that was primarily, I apologize, Stuart. I understand exactly where you're coming. Last thing we want to see is a bunch of boxes sitting there for weeks on end.
If you see it down in Shoreham, for example.
I'm not familiar with that, but that's not the intent.
And in Shoreham, it is set up specifically for that. In Shoreham, we actually leased the back half of that building, let back half of the property to a milk hauler who hauls, oh, I'm sorry, drops their trailers up at the back of the building. It's not our intention to have truckers dropping their trailers on our sites and leaving them.
And similarly, is there, is there going to be anything that references no idling?
We certainly can put signage up discouraging the use of the, the idling. We actually did that in our St. John's Ferry facility. We had a complaint from the neighbor, and we did put up no, uh, no idling signs of some sort.
But would that be something you'd be prepared to enforce if that were to happen?
No idling.
Just as an example, I mean, it's a, it's a management piece, but.
We certainly will take a look at, at that. Enforcing something that's happening away from the building is sometimes, A, hard to define what is idling, how long is acceptable, how do you, how do you, how do you judge that? And who is the?
In the sketch plan review for the planning commission, it had said that you could have the option to provide truck stop electrification. That would be more incentive to not idle. Okay, can you speak to that?
I, I actually, to be honest, I was not there at that meeting.
Might be premature for that one, Darrell, as far as, at least what tonight's intent is, is for. What I did want to touch on with regard to at least where those large trucks are basically being shepherded on the site, it's basically away from the main corridor where most of the activity is. So it's, again, not an area where your idling is automatically drawn to, it's out, put off to the side. It's done that way for a purpose. The other thing is, is that the general nature of this particular site is that there are not a lot of residential homes in the immediate vicinity. We do have to go up Churchill Road to basically get to the nearest ones there. So the idling component, where they have been put into place before, was because of the proximity of residential occupancies in close vicinity to the project site. This one, I think we'd want a little bit more discussion on as far as, I think it's ideal as far as no idling, but the practicality of diesel trucks is that they like to have them on. So if they're going to be on in an adverse way as far as impacting somebody else, then, then we should be doing so. So I, I want us also to focus on whether it's a necessity that we push that particular button as part of the discussions going forward.
Just in terms of the, the truck fueling area, it looks like there are, am I right, that there are parking spaces to the south of the intended area for truck fueling?
That's correct.
So, so those spaces are not for fueling, but those are, those spaces are for parking where the drivers can access the retail environment, is that the?
They can come in to the rest, to the cafe, to any of the retail component, yes. We didn't want the trucks parking right in, close to the store, just because of all of the circulation issues that would create. So we really wanted to segregate them in a separate portion of the property to make sure that we still had good, safe circulation around the building itself.
What happens if you have, how many parking spaces for trucks, Darrell? Is that four?
Three. We'll call it three.
Okay. And you have, what, two under the canopy potentially?
Yes.
So you have a total of five trucks. What happens when the sixth one shows up?
I guess the question is, is what is, what is our likely frequency of that happening?
Yeah, I don't have any idea.
It is unlikely, in my experience, that, that we have six trucks in the facility of this scale.
Okay, but if one pulled in, where does he go?
He would basically have to, if he came in off of Route 7?
Yeah.
He would have to basically wait behind one of those three spots, or wait for one of the two spots in the fueling area to open up.
Okay, so you're two up behind the parking places that are currently there.
Right.
Instead of just maneuvering around.
That's my guess on how they would operate.
You go into parking, you've got employee parking, just somewhere, I didn't find it right now, but it said something about thirty-nine parking spaces.
Are we getting into a planning commission meeting now? Just giving you our time.
Keep going.
Yeah, okay. So basically, the parking is set up so that there's customer parking proximate to the building. There's employee parking located farthest away, because that's less desirable as far as the clientele. And then there's also electric vehicle charging spaces that are dedicated for that area that is between the employee parking and the building itself.
And is there any commuter parking?
No. There's no commuter parking as part of this application, primarily, since you asked the question, because of lot coverage limitations. So if we could get more lot coverage, we actually have green space outside of wetland buffers, that would be an opportunity to put commuter parking spaces here.
And by that, do you mean park and ride situation?
Yes.
And did we have a number of parking spaces for the uses that are proposed?
Yes.
What was the number?
I don't know if I can tell you right off the top of my head, but we can provide those to you.
I'm trying to figure out the, the number that, I, I, to me, it seems like you have plenty. I'd just like to make sure that there, the number of parking spaces is at least equivalent to, if not more than what's required.
That's fair.
I know you're in the, sort of the character of the area affected element of the traditionally use would be. One of the pieces is sort of operation and intensity of the use. So twenty-four hour operation, are there other retail operations you show off that are running twenty-four hours?
I'm not familiar with any.
Do we know what the closest twenty-four hour operation is?
North Ferrisburg.
It is?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
What's the mobile station?
Yeah, Ferrisburg, yeah, Ferrisburg.
What, what in Ferrisburg is twenty-four hours?
Oh, the Shell Station.
The Shell?
Down by the dock, Doctor. Is that twenty-four hours?
No. The Jolly is.
The Jolly, that's what I mean. Yeah. I got, I got the, I got the fuel guy wrong, but the one right down, right by the bridge.
Yep. And isn't the Jiffy Mart down there also twenty-four hours?
I don't know.
I think the Jiffy Mart is too.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Lori Bruce.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? There's one other thing that we wanna kind of pull together on Section 2 as far as character of the area. The regular, end-use regulations talk to, or reference back to the purpose within the Village Commercial zoning district that this particular property is located within. And within that purpose statement, it has five different things that these, this particular zoning district is intended to support or promote. One of them, which is probably the greatest discussion item that we've heard so far, is that new facility should be designed to service citizens or the, you know, citizens of Shawatt, primarily that group. And one thing that we can say as far as this type of application is that the cafe or restaurant that's proposed as part of this application is really for citizens of Shawatt. I mean, right now, we're not looking for somebody who drives from Burlington to come down to the My Fresh Cafe. We'd like to think that they would be attracted to do that, but the reality is, is that there's so many other options for them between here and Burlington for that to occur. So the reality is, is that we are looking for all of the citizens of Shawatt to be coming to this particular restaurant and cafe. Obviously, there's gonna be other components associated with this. There's the new expanded gasoline diesel component, as well as the farm stand inside. So there's, there is gonna be commercial, and you say you already have commercial, we do. We'll have, if we're fortunate, longer hours than what is typical in town today. So you don't have to drive to Ferrisburg or to Sheldon to basically get the milk after nine o'clock. I do have children and they say, Dad, what do we have tomorrow morning? Okay, I'll go get some milk. That being the background, this project, if you imagine, you know, we, we talk about the Jollies or the Jiffys and where they're located in each community. Well, at this point, yes, there's one, there's two in Ferrisburg. Multiple ones in Sheldon, well, two, and even more in South Burlington, but none of this particular type in Shawatt. Why is that? Well, we're looking to service the citizens of Shawatt as part of this project. So we want the board to at least understand that component as we review the standards that are set forth in the purpose statement of this particular zoning district.
Can you speak to that? I mean, so, so what's proposed here is, is a commercial farm stand as distinct from a, I guess, something that we might see in a Jolly store? I'm assuming a commercial farm stand is something in the applicant's plan that's, that's different than you, than, than a Jolly store.
Well, it needs to, based on the definition of, of commercial farm stand, needs to focus on agricultural products, products that are manufactured from agricultural products.
And, and can you speak to that? I mean, what is, what is that, what are we likely to see on the shelves? What are five top-selling items for a commercial farm stand that we would see here in this community?
I'm gonna let Otto speak to that.
Certainly, I, I don't have the product list off the top of my head, certainly, we.
General category.
We actually manufacture and sell maple syrup in our company, so that might be a, a good product that you might see. There are many products in, in, in the stores, whether, whether it's locally brewed craft beer, whether it is King Arthur flower type of, of product you may see, whether it's buttermilk biscuit pancake mix, whether it's the, some locally produced dilly games. There's a, there is a plethora of agricultural-based products that could be merchandised in that space.
What, what's distinct about an agricultural-based product in the way you're proposing this commercial farm stand from what we might see in a, a, you know, bag of Doritos made from corn? Is, what's the distinction that you're making?
I guess I'm, I'm not.
The, the distinction that we're making is that the, that this particular store will be operated to, so as to focus, certain areas of the store will be operated so as to focus on agricultural products. I, I think, given the definition of agricultural, an agricultural farm stand, virtually anything we eat would fit within the definition of, of an agricultural farm stand. That's in the definition of your, from your orders. And so, so the, what we're trying to do, though, is to arrange the store so, and to design the store so that the folk, there are areas of the store that are focused on agricultural, local agricultural, more agricultural products. And those would be, we're, we're sort of going around the state and looking at the stores to see how, what, what the focus is in those stores. And, but, you know, milk, cheese, maple, maple products, craft beers, you know, the vegetables, fruits, those, that, that will be the focus of the areas that we designate for the, the farm stand use.
So at the outset, you talked about the intention being the use of this, this commercial farm stand significantly for Shawatt residents. So is there a distinction between, I mean, it seems to me that, just sort of from my way of thinking about it, there's a distinction between the kind of things that would be, things that would be in demand for a local market of people who were close to their home, using things presumably in their home or around their home, and people who were sort of driving through, right? So do you have an example you could point to of one of your businesses that has this kind of assortment of merchandise? And where you could show us how you merchandise that?
So, so the.
Or would you be run, would you not be running it yourselves?
I, I think the answer is that, no, there isn't one. This will be a one-of-a, this is a one-of-a-kind design that is focused to respond to the building requirements in Shawatt.
So I asked, I asked Daryl if he could pull up the definition that we have here in town of commercial farm stand, apparently, unless you guys have it, I mean, I'll just paraphrase from it, because it says a booth, stand, or other structure, and then talks about size. I mean, are you basically saying that that isn't what most people think of as a farm stand? I mean, how do you interpret, how do you apply commercial farm stand to what you're doing here on a definitional basis?
I gotta, I gotta get to the, the definition.
It's in Section 10.
Okay. So.
It talks about a booth, stand, or other structure.
So the, the store will be organized so that certain parts of the store have the agricultural products. And that area will be greater than 400 square feet. What is, what?
What I'm getting at is that, I mean, it seems to me that, I mean, you're taking a very broad view of this definition. You're basically saying it's pretty much anything. Is that fair to say? I mean, what, let me, let me back up, John. I mean, what do you see as the limitations on a commercial farm stand, based on this definition?
Frankly, I, I think there are not many. Our intent is to locate, is to focus on, is to have the agricultural, what people would understand to be agricultural products located together in a particular area of the store.
Okay, but at some point, and it'll probably have to be for the next meeting, can you, you be able to actually show us what the commercial farm stand is gonna look like and what the ag products are gonna be?
We can, I, I think we can show you the areas, those areas. I think the, we can give you a list of, of, of what the products are gonna be. I think the, the products will vary by, by, may vary during the year. But I, but I think we've given you a listing of, of generally what the products are.
I haven't seen.
No.
No, no, I mean, tonight, tonight, I think we've given you a listing of generally what they are.
Yeah, you basically referred to the definition.
No, we haven't yet. We, we've developed one internally, but we haven't shared that.
It'd be good to see that.
Yeah. I'd like to see a better interior map with more, like, the square footage of each thing. And there's a section here that's in white, that's not, doesn't have a category at all. So I'd like to see exactly the square footage lines, you know, mirrors on all that.
Yes.
And, and you have it in blue, it says gas station products. You have those spread around, it just says 30 square feet. And I'd like to see about, you know, making everything a little bigger, one, it's a little bit easier to read, and two, the farm stand and the cafe, restaurant part isn't, doesn't have a size, and like I said, the other part isn't categorized at all, and I'd like to know what it is and, and the size.
That's a fair request. Yes, we will give you a large-scale plan that is legible and fills in the blank.
If, if, coming back, back to your earlier statement, that the, if the purpose of the Village Commercial District is to offer retail and services primarily for the residents of Shawatt, would you anticipate that the sales would show that proportionally?
The sales of what?
The sales of the operation.
We certainly, we hope so. Truly, the retail component, we particularly attract many local folks to our facilities. If we go to Georgia, we see a lot of people who live in Georgia shopping at our, at our locations. When we go to many of our locations, Johnson, we see many people from Main Street Johnson shopping at our locations, whether it's business people, whether it's Johnson State College used around the corner from us. Those are our regular customers that we see on a daily, day-in, day-out basis.
You're talking about the retail part?
Yes.
Is that same old true for the restaurant?
Yes, absolutely, especially the restaurant, if you have any fortune.
If, if you think about it, there's nothing that we're proposing that is so special that you, how can I say this?
You go a long distance.
You, you, you wouldn't go long distance to get to it. The, we, the market that we, the reason the market we're trying to capture is within a few miles. You don't drive more than a few miles to buy gas. You don't drive more than a few miles to buy milk or, or those, those kinds of things, or you, unless you have to. We're trying to make those possibilities available, and we think that the people who will use those possibilities are local people, not people driving here from Burlington. Now, there will be people who stop, who are from Burlington or Massachusetts or New York, who will stop at the gas station. The reason they're stopping is not because they've driven here to, to get to buy gas from us, it's because they're passing by and we happen to be the, a close gas station that's open when they need gas. But the primary market that we have will be to serve people in Shawatt for all purposes.
So the trucks represent, I mean, they're a secondary market? Is that sort of a, a nice-to-have for your business? If the primary market is serving, I, I don't imagine that the trucks are largely gonna represent Shawatt-based business or retail buyers.
I, Otto can correct me, but I think the, the truck business is a nice-to-have that adds to the, that facilitates providing what is really the, the primary business which is serving people in Shawatt.
Hey, Matt, actually, one thing that did come up at the sketch plan here and before the planning commission was that exact question relative to what is the target market for the diesel component? And it really wasn't the professional truckers that are basically driving up and down Route 7 because they already have their spots that they go to at the beginning of the day or at the end of their day. What we're looking to do is basically pick up all those other people that are local and, gee, I gotta go fill a truck. So that is really not a, we're driving a minute from Route 7 type of approach. It was the recognition that this is going to be a local, oh, shoot, need to fill off. So that's where we expect to avoid that.
This is gonna be, this is gonna be.
That's just aspirational, you hope that that happens.
Well, that's actually what Mr. Valley indicated at the last meeting was what they actually, what actually happens at their facilities.
And what is, but, hold on just a second, I mean, what do you base that on? I mean, you made a statement that it's local guys coming to the gas station, how do you know that?
I'm, I, I can't speak for that, Stuart, as far as my personal experience. That's only what Mr. Valley expressed to us, so we will, we will pose that question too.
I mean, certainly, from, from our experience in, in locations like this with smaller diesel presence, we are getting the, the smaller operators, whether it's the milkman who's behind us who needs diesel for his, for his fuel, whether it's the local contractor who's driving a Chevy, uh, driving a, a contracting van. We get a lot of school buses, we get a lot of smaller-type vehicles. These are experiences that these locations that are not major truck stop facilities attract the smaller sort of local contractor and hauler type of folks.
Like Johnson probably, is my guess. Because you got, what, Route 2 going through there, or?
Uh, 15, go through Johnson. And Johnson is, is actually relatively new, but we're getting a ton of, as I mentioned, Ramoyle Valley Transit and the local bus traffic. In Morrisville, we have a location called P J's, very similar kind of a, a concept. And we, and we do get, you know, local contractors throwing up their, their, their vehicles.
That's just because the, the trucking, I think, that some of this represents a potential character of the area issue. Can you give us a sense of the size of the storage tank, of the, the diesel tank as compared to the, the other one?
The actual size of the tank that's in the.
Yeah, what's, what's proposed, the two tanks? How do they?
We, we haven't proposed anything yet. I would say that it's likely that we was probably proposed to the state a 15,000-gallon underground storage tank for, for diesel.
Something, nothing's been proposed?
Nothing is specific, yeah.
Now, that's, is it going, it says it's multi, is, are you planning to put in off-road diesel, or are you planning to put in kerosene?
We would most likely like to have off-road diesel available at this location just because farmers like to use off-road diesel. We sell a fair amount of it in, in our more rural locations. Kerosene, where we have off-road diesel, we haven't had great success. People tend to use the off-road diesel more than the kerosene.
I was just wondering, sometimes when people do fuel, they, for, for a house, sometimes those, they'd wanna go to a place that has kerosene rather than the off-road diesel.
And, and we have a lot of customers who do come to our off-road diesel pumps specifically for their home heating needs, because the off-road diesel is not a tax product, so it saves them, saves them money. And most home heating appliances do work with off-road diesel unless they're specifically designed for kerosene.
Right, it's just the kerosene is usually what they go for when we have our nice week and a half, two weeks of below-zero weather. Everybody starts to freeze up.
We're, we're not opposed to, to doing kerosene, we've just seen that when we offer both off-road diesel and kerosene, the off-road diesel outperforms the kerosene significantly.
Otto, is there an example of, of the, say, Johnson or one of your facilities where you have a actual restaurant versus fast food operation that we, as a board, could check out?
Sure, I, I think that Johnson is probably the closest facility to you, representing sort of what we're proposing for this location. We also have a location across the lake in Plasberg, New York. We built a, a facility on the. We built a facility on the historic airbase in that location. And both of those locations have a similar menu to what we'd offer in this location. A few less seating options available in those locations. Johnson, we were limited with our, I believe that we limited ourselves to twenty-four tables. I think that we proposed thirty-six for this location. And with some more work on the wastewater side of things, we could probably get that as high as forty-eight.
Are you talking about tables or seats? I thought you were talking about seats.
Seats, I'm sorry, seats, yes, seats.
Otto has pictures in his phone of either the Johnson or the...
Of our Plasberg location. If you wanted to see what are, I could bring it up on Dropbox and show you what kind of, some of the visual elements of the...
We can do that now or we can provide those to you?
I think next, this is going to get continued until something weak anyway.
Yeah, yeah. I think it would be helpful not only seeing physically what the restaurant would look like or at first, if similar examples, but also understanding your definition of a restaurant. Sort of what exactly happens? Is there food prepared on-site? How big is the food prep area? Is there table service? I mean, just sort of understanding some of those things, the diagrams and what we had to work with. I didn't, I didn't get a lot of information on that.
Oh Matt, you are right. I think probably we realized that when Skip wasn't going to be here, he provided that same narrative as part of the sketch plan hearing before the planning commission. So I think what we owe you is a narrative that can go into the record that identifies how the operations would work. Then you could make your determination as far as whether it complies with the definition.
That would be great.
But I presume we could coordinate essentially a site visit to Johnson? I'm a tire of the series.
Yeah, yeah.
He's going to make it simple. It's a nice drive.
Another operation is, what's near me? Thank you. I don't know which one's easier for you.
Johnson's probably a better, closer example to what we're, what we're going to be doing. Johnson or crossing Plasberg at the airbase.
And Johnson have a similar amount of tractor-trailer setup?
It has almost an identical, actually pretty much identical fuel setup.
And just a, do you run the restaurant or do you have a contractor who, or do you lease it out to someone?
We operate the whole facility. Our valley employees operate the whole.
Your employees are running the restaurant and the retail store and the...
Mr. Chair, I think that finalizes at least the initial discussion on item two, the character of the area.
Okay. Well, we'll continue on then.
So item three is traffic. And our earlier narrative to the board was that I think it would be, we would like to request a continuance of the hearing to enable for a dedicated traffic discussion, one that would occur after we've had input from the agency transportation, at least on Route 7, component of the project. Timing of that, we'd be doing well, I think, in four weeks to have something.
The only thing I noticed with the traffic study that was done, the main thing is, is that there was absolutely nothing about Route Road.
About, sorry?
About Route Road.
When you say Route Road, is that background, background traffic in Route?
There was nothing.
Okay.
There was absolutely nothing that even...
You're thinking about the use of Route Road?
Yeah. The used, the traffic that was, that's on Route Road, I know it's limited to...
Oh, Route Road, I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought we were talking, never mind.
Nope, not Route 7, Route Road. There's absolutely nothing on, in your, in your traffic study at all that had to do with Route Road. And to me, you, you're, we've got a Rise and Shine guy and we've got the town trucks going to the, to the sand pile and that's it. And now you've increased this by...
We will be increasing it as far as truck traffic. But the reason the traffic study didn't probably go there is because typically, traffic impact studies are focused on intersections that generate more than seventy-five AM or PM peak trips in and out of the facility. And that particular circulation component for truck traffic was really way low compared to the passenger-vehicle component.
True. It only takes one truck to have an accident coming out.
No, understood. So we did address that as far as at least circulation. You know, as far as plans that identify what the ability for the vehicles to make those turning movements are. Relative to conflicts with other users of the road, we can provide some input on that.
I didn't notice that on your plan, you did have a stop sign difference. But it said new stop sign.
Correct.
But there are often two components for traffic studying. One is capacity, where you look at how well will things perform. There's also safety in site distances. What you're talking about is not, is more safety, site distance issues. And they're usually are not, you know, computer simulations and stuff. Usually the engineer will go out and measure how far away can you see the site distance.
Right. So you don't have to do anything through 7 because you're not changing things, except for closing off an entrance. So we don't deal with the volume of traffic on a particular road? The increase in the volume of traffic?
Is that a question or...
Yeah. Do you deal, with the traffic study, do you deal with the increase in volume of traffic?
If, if there is a question about the capacity of the road to handle the additional traffic, yes.
So I guess the best way to answer the question is, is that we will supplement the impact study with information for Route Road, both as far as safety, as far as site limits, access egress, as well as capacity. I don't think there's a capacity issue, and that's why it never was high on the issue, high on the list. But as out of respect of the board and its needs to address traffic, we will have that taken care of.
So one thing that's not related to your traffic study, but if you could pull up any one of those last plans that we saw... Yeah, there we go. Up in the right-hand corner of the larger one, is that a crosswalk across Route 7? I assume that is.
So what this application proposes is to install a walkway from the store out to the corner. Right now, our discussions with V-Trans, they're actually proposing to upgrade that signal within the next few years. So the current wire span that runs across Route 7 is going to be replaced with mast arms for them. In this particular case, they've indicated that the warrants for a pedestrian traffic, crossing infrastructure, lights and the like, aren't met. So they're not going to actually install a crosswalk at that location. We've shown it illustratively there to indicate why we're bringing a walkway out to that future crossing. The, what they did commit to is putting all of the conduit underneath Route 7 as part of this project to facilitate those installations in the future if we can get the pedestrian numbers higher to basically justify that particular safety feature. It's very ironic. I get very frustrated with V-Trans and the fact that they won't allow you to put in traffic safety improvements until it's too late almost. So I'll go on the record for that. So that being the background, it's very close to me because we also served on the sidewalk committee in town and some people liked it and some didn't. But nonetheless, that was a location ultimately as part of a future phase that we saw connectivity from that particular part of the zoning district back into the village. So what we wanted to do as part of this project was at least make sure that infrastructure within this project and when working with V-Trans, that the ability to get those crossing lights installed was done as easy as possible.
But yes, as a practical matter, I mean, is there any attempt to prevent people from walking across Route 7 to come or go?
No. They do it today.
Where?
I cross Route 7.
Well, that's you.
Yeah. It's not fun, but I'm just saying it does happen.
No, but I'm dead serious. I mean, where, where in town along the stretch of Route 7 do you have people walking in Charlotte, walking back and forth across Route 7?
Well, typically not a lot.
The underpass.
This is just one of those locations where the way the zoning works is you have destinations and origins that basically cross Route 7.
Well, no, I get it. But that's my point. I got a practical issue about you've got a destination that's either going to put up, that's either going to generate pedestrian traffic or attract traffic. And that's a little spooky frankly, under the current circumstances. And my question is, how do you stop that from happening, if you can?
How do you stop that or how do you...
How do you mitigate it in some way? But you're saying the lights and stuff...
Convincing V-Trans to actually allow us to install the crossing signals would be a mitigation component.
Okay, they have a format for that, I presume?
Yes.
Whatever that is. What's that called?
Well, they call them warrants.
Warrants?
Warrants. So basically, it's specific standards that have to be met in order for the justification of certain types of measures included in the traffic coordination. What they don't want to do is have everybody putting crossings across Route 7 just because it's going to get to a point where everybody's numb to it and when you're supposed to stop, you don't. So that's why they want to make sure that whenever something is warranted, that it does go in, but doesn't go in if it's not warranted. So the warrant is the magic word in regards to whether a particular standard has been met to require that particular type of facility.
So it's essentially warranted or needed is another word?
Yes.
Okay. But it waits until then?
Yes.
Okay, got it. I understand your frustration, but I can...
On your, since we're doing traffic, is part of this traffic from V-Trans dealing with, you got C-1.1 and C-1.2 where there's different traffic patterns? Yes. It's part of their, part of their maps. Yep, C-1.1 and C-1.2. The C-1.1 has a, from the south, it has a left turn and a straight. And on C-1.2, it has a left, a straight, and what we used to refer to as a suicide lane.
Right. So that information was included in your package back when the application was originally prepared. In working with V-Trans, that has now been removed in light of some safety concerns, as well as ultimately what, how left-hand turn movements will be handled into the site. So that's why, this is a good example of why we would like to have at least V-Trans' final conditions in our hands understood. So then we can update the package and show you exactly what they're saying and see how close we can get to doing the same thing.
And on C-1.1, is it 1.1? Actually, it's 1.3. It looks, are these, to the north of the building, between the parking lots, there's some boxes here. Are those for the fuel?
Actually, they're for sanitary sewage. So those happen to be physical components of the sewage collection treatment and drainage system. They're shown in more detail later on in the plan set.
Okay.
And Dave, you might get to this later, but can I see C-1.7? Okay, I wish my pointer would work, but on the two boxes on the left, I mean, that's pretty, I guess my point is, I don't see any traffic flow related to the traffic coming from the north. This is everybody pulling in from the south and exiting on Churchill Road.
Yes.
Is there going to be something that deals with that at some point?
So southbound turning movements coming down Route 7, turning into the site actually are less restrictive than as you're moving north. So the challenge for the trucks moving right into the facility is that it doesn't have the benefit of both the northbound lane, as well as the center, as Frank calls it, suicide lane. In this particular case, it's actually dedicated left-hand turn lane to move into the site. There's actually much more room as you're moving southbound, turning left into the site because you have two extra lanes for the rear end of your truck to basically maneuver into the site.
Right, but I was curious. I don't see anything.
Oh, understood. We didn't show it because unfortunately, the engineer said, well, we don't need to show it because it's just going to chew up paper because it's actually an easier movement. We're happy to add that to basically demonstrate that feature.
Those are turning radiuses to show...
Infinitely, I understand.
That what's possible. But the movement into the site, we don't need to do the turning radius movement to analyze it because that's an easier movement. But the, as to whether you can make it, whether you have the capacity to make it and whether the safe, whether the safety site distance is literally there, that's all being analyzed, just not being figured.
Okay, so that will be coming.
It'll fill in the blanks.
Yeah, because you got traffic coming from the north, you got traffic coming from the south. It'd be helpful to understand how all that works, not only on the site, but out of the road.
And to Frank's point, all to one Route Road, if somebody decides to come in the backside.
Yeah. And the turning for the trucks that are coming out of Route Road onto Churchill Road, it is a sharper than a ninety-degree corner. So for some of the bigger trucks, it might be a little, little more difficult.
So all of these turning movements represent the biggest truck that legally can be on the road? It's what we call a WB-67. It's the fifty-three-foot trailers?
Right, but your, your, your plan doesn't show them turning from Route Road onto Churchill Road.
Correct. But we'll add that. We weren't concerned about it, Frank, but to basically demonstrate that it works graphically, we'll add that information.
Right. Because it seems to me that the truck may end up having to go almost all completely across the road in order to make the turn.
There's a lot of open pavement area there. Rise and Shine basically has their footprint area come out to the edge of Route Road. So there's a lot of flexibility at that particular location. But it's one that, we talked earlier about the fact that that particular area is also partially gravelled today. That we're going to have to pave that in order to keep from tearing over the road.
Is there an interior, I'm looking for an interior picture of the building. Is there one in any of the materials?
Well, this is what Matt was mentioning and lamenting, the fact that there's one diagram and it's very, it's visually challenged.
Gotcha.
So what we promised to do is give you a full-size plan of the interior of the building, how we're going to have the allocating product and spaces and square footages allocated to each particular area. And so fortunately...
What page is the existing interior?
It's towards the back.
It's attachment F-G. Twelve G? It's twelve G. Yep. Right there, right there. Open that up.
Gotcha. Okay. Gotcha.
Dave, one thing that isn't laid out in here on this floor plan is any kind of office? Is there any office management operation within this building?
Otto, you speak a little bit as far as common space for administrative or employee areas? You speak a little bit as far as common space for administrative or employee areas?
Sure. In the, on the, on the drawing, in the...
I assume it was in the undefined white area?
It was in the undefined white area. It is in the, behind the angle part of the cooler. You see a door going into a triangle-shaped room with an L-desk.
Okay.
We'll see, we'll see more of that when you get the bigger interior.
Yes, it'll be much better.
In terms of the restaurant, then can I assume that the food preparation is somewhere in here? I mean, this is the tables. Where are they cooking the food?
Where are they making? Can you, can you help out through that, Al, a little bit?
Yes, in the, is yours colored?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, on the right side of the page, that right side of the page is where the restaurant is. A long section that kinda angles toward the front is kinda the, the, where the food prep and where the food ordering takes place. The food, cooking equipment is along the back wall of that area.
Okay, that's the, the northern wall probably?
No, actually, that would be the eastern wall.
Eastern wall, okay.
What, they look like sort of islands in them?
In the restaurant area?
Yeah.
That, that may be some, some salads for.
Cold cases?
Cold cases, salads for folks to, to grab, fruit, cold perishable items.
So that, that area behind here, this is not where customers would go to pick up food. This is where cooks would be preparing food. It would be served to people sitting?
No, no. The, against the outside wall would be.
The cooks are over here.
Against the outside, okay.
This, this, these boxes over here, on the eastern side is, is, is the equipment. And this shelf, this, this here is, I'm assuming is a, is a, is a counter to, this here, this here.
So you're saying this is food?
That's a counter to, to be served from?
Food prep happens back here, some up here.
Okay, and then the seating, there's like, is this booth seating here?
Seating is up in this corner.
That's, okay.
I gotta wait for, for, for our.
Yeah, yeah, better, yeah, then.
For a better.
And is Johnson, the Johnson location sort of similar enough feel that we'd get a sense of?
You can get a feel of the type, well, first of all, is Johnson, it's a one-of-a-kind project. For Johnson, you can get kind of a feel for the type of product that will be, the type of restaurant products that will be serving in this location. In Johnson, for instance, we have fresh northeast-raised burgers, which would be a component of, of this location. We have whole pizzas, which would be a component of this, the menu at this location.
Okay, so the, so the concept, the menu concept is similar, the physical layout is different?
It, it is slightly different.
Okay, and the, the service model in Johnson is similar?
Is similar, but again, slightly different. This location, we have more seating, we'd be encouraging more people to eat on premises than in Johnson.
But Johnson is in downtown Johnson, isn't it?
It is, yes.
So if we may kind of bring a little bit of closure to item three, traffic, with the understanding that we'll have a more detailed presentation to the board with the traffic consultant, and hopefully input from V-Trans at some future date. Can we move to item four perhaps, which talks about bylaws in effect? So I will read this, not to belabor the issue, but it's actually fairly short as far as the actual language. So what the intent is, is the board shall determine whether the proposed development conforms to the municipal bylaws and ordinances currently in effect, including but not limited to the road ordinance. So things that the applicant will be required to do anytime you wanna do work within the public rights of way. So this would be anything, any work within Churchill Road, rights of way, so beyond the edge of the pavement, town actually owns anywhere between 50 and 60 feet of width. You're required to get permission from the select board. Likewise, any work on Route Road, even though it's a Class 4 road, it's still the town's, it's still yours. The select board is required to, the applicant's required to go to the select board and seek permission to utilize that. So that's where many of these particular details ultimately we worked out in regards to how the applicant will be improving Route Road to basically facilitate these truck movements out, traffic signs, those types of improvements are all part of that local or town-ish shallot access permit requirement, so.
And part of that is that this project actually has three road frontages.
Yes.
So the, so I noticed that the, that things are set up more towards Route 7 as being the front.
Yes.
But it does have, it, it is, should be considered also that the Churchill Road and Route Road are both considered road frontages.
Well, we definitely, you know, as far as the orientation of the building, and it goes back to the discussion as far as why one particular part of the building doesn't have as many windows as the other. One of them is because of that's where the food preparation go, so there's gonna be more of a blank wall on that east side. We basically picked on the users of Route Road, so between Junior Lewis and his crew, as well as Peter Carrero and Rise and Shine, they do get, you know, the short end of the straw of the four sides of the building that basically was, was designed, and wanted to basically make sure that views from Route 7 as well as Churchill Road had the opportunity to have a more classical building. The backside, on Route Road side, they have to pick one of the four, ultimately does not have as much character. So that's one of the reasons why, when you look at the building footprint, that it stands out that way. We'll work on how to make that not look like a hotel. We heard that word tonight, on that particular side of the building. It's a valid point. So we can work on breaking up the mass of that particular side of the building with different materials, colors, things of that nature. But again, the reason why you don't have the full five or six windows similar to the other three sides is because we do have basically the back of the house operations occurring on that side of the building. So when it comes to those bylaws, we talk about road ordinance, and the fact that anything that occurs within the town road areas needs to have that particular permit. We feel that this particular application has the ability to get that. We've spoken with Junior Lewis in regards to what he's going to require, or would recommend, I should say, to the select board, as far as things that need to be improved upon. Thing, and a lot of that detail's not here, and maybe it should be, in order for you to come to that positive conclusion. Things that ultimately will also be occurring is that, no, I'll just leave it at that. I think those, there was one component of the project that is no longer gonna be an issue for the town, as far as the sewer force may. So we'll, we'll talk about that later, though. That leads us, segues into the next component, which we talked about wastewater ordinances. Town basically required.
I'm sorry, Dave, I'm, I'm confused. I'm looking at these pictures, and this is the, a wall with no windows, but that's looking from Churchill Road.
You're right.
So if, if we're talking about Route Road and we're talking about Junior Lewis, we'd be looking west, correct?
That's right. So you're right, there's not the, not the windows on that particular side of the building.
So, so travelers from Route 7 heading south, and drivers of Churchill Road will essentially be seeing the, the mass you just described?
Except for the, except for the door penetration, you're right.
Okay.
Yes. I apologize. I didn't realize that that was the case on that side of the building, too. Is that anything that we can be looking at in the meantime, as far as how to improve the character on that side of the building?
Sure. I think that even though that is a, an equipment wall, there are architectural ways of adding window-looking components to that from a, for a better visual field.
So that's our, our home guide. Back to wastewater. So wastewater ordinances, you're required, anybody who wants to modify their wastewater system or create a new one, is required to get what used to be a permit from the town, now all wastewater permits are regulated by the state of Vermont. Turns out that the town-ish shallot is one of two in the state that actually administers the state's wastewater program on behalf of the state, so it's great, we get one stop shopping here. We have submitted an application for wastewater disposal for the project site to understand, so we, just to quickly bring closure to this, what is happening is that the wastewater is proposed to be disposed of on a separate parcel. It is allowed within the zoning district to place wastewater on a separate parcel for this particular use. And if you can imagine driving north on Route 7 from the intersection of Ferry Road and Churchill Road, on the left-hand side, it initially starts out really wet, really flat, and then you start up the hill. On the left-hand side there, that's Happy Patrick's property, that actually has been proved out for wastewater disposal to support this particular project. So we will basically be doing what's called a directional bore, which is an mechanically underground installed horse van faced a pipe to convey the wastewater from this particular site up to that hillside location. This is all done without doing any impacts to the wetlands, so what we call a traditional cut and cover, where you send an excavator out, dig a trench, put the pipe in, backfill, that's not gonna be what we see. You will see that on the very two ends. There's gonna be 1,200 feet of directional bore, where there's two-inch line, it's gonna go five to six feet underneath the ground to basically get to its terminus point and the beginning point of the project site. But everything in between, you'd never know that there's something there. So that, we actually need to get that permit from the state of Vermont, based on what they prefer as far as an alignment. So that's part of the access permit that's currently pending for them. But ultimately, the ability to actually dispose of wastewater is all under control of the town's consultants.
Wasn't there two different versions?
There were two different routes. There was, on your plans, there was a route that actually ran perpendicular to Route 7, crossing from east to west, and then it would turn and crossed in the northerly direction and crossed Ferry Road. And that particular one has been taken off the table. So that's, again, another example of, things have happened since the application originally went into the board.
So you're planning on doing? So you're planning on doing the diagonal?
I'm sorry, doing the diagonal, yes. So it's just one less limitation or impact on the town. So just going on, the board shall not approve a proposed development that does not meet the requirement of other bylaws and ordinances in effect at the time of application. So it goes on to list those other ordinances that are in effect, that include the animal nuisance ordinance, motor vehicle and traffic regulation, that's basically your speed ordinance and traffic sign ordinance, street naming ordinance, we won't be doing any of that, the shallot park and wildlife refuge ordinance, not applicable, and the Thompson's Point wastewater ordinance, so not applicable in regards to that. So really, the, the issues that we need to basically make sure that we've got the board comfortable with is going to be dealing with those first two components. Now lastly, item five, the use of renewable energy resources. So in this particular case, I'll read verbatim, "The board will consider whether the proposed development will interfere with the sustainable use of renewable energy resources by either diminishing their future availability on the subject parcel, or by interfering with neighboring property owners' access to such resources." So, and they say EG, like for solar or wind power. In this particular case, what we've proposed or tried to enable is the placement of PV panels on the buildings and the canopy in support of actually maximizing capabilities on the project site. So the orientation of the buildings, the canopies help come into, you know, assist us in meeting that particular standard. Relative to this particular project's impact to the properties around it, I think we're in a position to say that we're not, don't have tall enough building to basically cast shadows on anybody. So right now, at this point, between both the PV panels, as well as the electronic vehicle char, electric vehicle charging components, we felt that we've come a good way in regards to dealing with the renewable energy aspect. We do have one question as far as whether PV panels represent reflective issues. So we're gonna be looking into that relative to traffic safety. So we wanna make sure that we don't put something on top of the building that at a certain time of the day that people get blinded. So we're gonna be looking at reflectivity, as well as the angles of the panels, basically make sure that we're not creating a situation that's adverse.
I have one question, start.
Yeah, Dave, I'm just jumping back on something. In, in the materials, do you address lot coverage?
Yes.
Where is that?
Um, sheet 1.1 or 1.1, let me, let me confirm, sheet 1.2.
As in C?
C-1.2, in the bottom-left-hand corner. So we have a chart there that basically deals with zoning compliance issues. Sorry, we tucked it away in a place you couldn't find it.
And you didn't, and on this one, you didn't have the, you didn't have the proposed or existing for the height?
No, we didn't. But we can add that, just to fulfill the record. Bless you.
Well, I'm just looking, I'm just, this is the first time I, I saw this, but you're talking about the maximum lot coverage percentages, 41%?
It's 40.
I know, but I'm just looking on the sheet. You're saying 41, but in the regs, it's 40?
The regs are 40. Right now, this is grandfathered based on its existing condition being 41%.
What's grandfathered?
The existing facility has 41% lot coverage.
What basis is a grandfathered?
Been in place prior to the adoption of zoning is an answer.
Right, but if the use is discontinued, doesn't that grandfathering expire at some point?
It does. The question is, is whether it's been discontinued. We'll get back to you on that end of things.
I think that goes to whether the use can continue, but, but the structure and the construction on the site is out there now.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
I use my flashlight.
Ready to open up to the audience?
We're calling Brad.
Okay. I guess the zoning board has asked multitude of questions. Open up the floor to anybody in the audience that may have a question. And well, when you state your name, you will be, you, you will accept being sworn in? And all questions are directed to the board. So state your name.
Rebecca Foster. I said Claire, is that how it went?
That's, yep, that's fine.
Is that good? I guess my first question is procedural, and are we going to have a continuation? Cause I know there are a lot of people who did want to make comments, and many of those people have left because it's after nine o'clock, so.
I think that the applicant has requested a continuance, so I'm pretty sure that the continuance is going to happen. I, I, I expect it to happen. We have to vote on a continuance, so if we make a motion, we have to settle the motion, and we won't accept anything else more tonight, so if you, so it's, it's part of the procedure. So if, if you wanna ask a question, ask a question, if you, if.
I'm, I'm good waiting until the next one, if, if you're going to, for sure, continue it. If not, I'll, you know.
We're, we're fine with accepting questions now. So if, if.
But we will be continuing, we just have to.
But we will be continuing, we just have, it's just part of, it's just that we have to set a date and time if we continue, so. And then, if we continue, then we don't accept anything else tonight, so. Anybody that wants to say something tonight, feel free to say something and be called on and recognized, that's fine. If you feel that you wanna save it for the next time we meet, that is your option. I, like I said, we're, I, I believe we're planning on going to another meeting, but we have to set a time and date.
Okay, so I, I don't wanna take a lot of time tonight if there's gonna be another meeting. I know people wanting to get home, I'm getting that vibe. But I would want to ask you, in the otherwise very excellent letter in the paper today, it might have been a little misleading about the process after tonight, so I wanted to, if you could clarify what the next steps in the decision-making process for everybody?
Uh, well, what would you guys?
Well, what we're going to do tonight is, if, because the applicant has stated that he wants the continuance, is we would continue to a date and time, and we'd have another meeting just like this, where hopefully the applicant has the added information that's been discussed tonight that the board would like. And we'd accept any other information from anybody else. And basically, it would continue until the board felt that we had all the information we needed to make a decision, or all the information that is, that needs, that wants to be presented. And once we close the hearing, then the, then we have our deliberative session, and we make a decision, and we have 45 days to come up with a decision in writing.
And then it goes to the planning commission for the...
The, that has nothing to do with the zoning board's process.
Correct.
That has to do with the process of the applicant. The applicant, after a decision is made by the zoning board, if, if a positive decision was made by the zoning board to go forward, then the applicant would have to set up a time to do a site plan with the planning commission. And that's another whole warrant, do the warning, and schedule a meeting and have a meeting, and however the planning commission decides to do their operation.
I'm hearing a request for a larger room the next time, so that everybody can get a seat. Maybe, if that's possible, that would be terrific.
I suppose it could be. The only problem I have with that is, is I can't, I can't set a time and place for the next meeting and say that I'm going to have it at a different location when I haven't talked with that location to see if I can use their facility.
I believe meetings need to be accessible, and I guess technically it's accessible, but a lot of people had to stand or sit on the floor. It was very difficult to see the material that was projected.
And again, I don't know, you know, what I can do about that right now, because I can't, like I said, I can't state a time and place if I don't have a place other than our townhome. I would have to, I would have to contact, I'm assuming you're recommending probably the school, and I would have to contact the school, but I'd have to know now in order to say I want to do it. I, you know, I don't have somebody, I don't know, I don't have a representative from the school saying, yes, I authorize you to use our room.
Well, if it's possible, once you've set a time and a date and they're available, if it's possible to move it, that would be a lot easier.
That request has been noted, and I think, you know...
It's been noted, it's been noted, but the thing is, is that it's not going to be required for the town to inform everybody that, of the change of venue. Because the reason why we don't have to warn it, again, is because you're told tonight that where the time and place is going to be next. So, if I have to, so, so if the venue changes between now and then, I don't know if a new warning would have to be done in order to change the venue.
By default, we just reschedule it for here. What else are you going to do?
That's what I have to do.
Well, we could, I mean, if you had, if we had a location identified tonight, which we do not, we would probably warrant it as a matter of course, or a matter of courtesy. Nonetheless, it sounds like, like what David said, that they're going to need at least a month. That's plenty of time to re-warn it.
So, what some communities will do is they will have a faux meeting, so schedule it two weeks from now. In the meantime, you figure out if there's this facility that's available four or five weeks from now, and then at that particular meeting, two weeks from now, you notice it. You tell them what that's being continued.
So, if we continue, if we were to continue this to the 14th of February, we have a meeting on the 14th?
That's right.
If we could continue this to the 14th for the sole purpose of setting a bigger venue?
We could, but that doesn't promise that we'll have one.
I realize that.
But, yeah, I mean...
Well, if we don't have, if we don't have one in two weeks, we can schedule another meeting just at here.
That's right. I mean, we could just have it, that 14th meeting, just to identify venue.
That's it. I mean, that's a, that's a possibility, but that means that in order to know where the venue is going to be, you would have to show up at the meeting, because we're not, we don't email or, or send a letter out to everybody.
Check the website.
They would have to check the website or check, or check with the office, the planning zoning office, to find out the venue.
We could advertise it as a courtesy in the citizen. Charlotte, oh, the, the town has a policy right now that they use the citizen.
The website seems sufficient, right?
Just saying, what our standard procedures are.
All right, just move along here.
So, we're going to go, we're going to go with that, so, you know, like I said, we just have to know where we're going to be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Your name, please?
My name's Tom Powell, and I do swear, according to what was spoken of earlier. This is addressed to the board. Is there a way that we can perhaps in advance raise issues that we came to light to us tonight or have already come to light in advance of this next meeting? This meeting was entirely unsatisfactory to me in terms of answering a number of issues, and I think it would be perhaps efficient and helpful if there was some way we could channel questions, concerns, and ideas to you that could then perhaps be conveyed either at the next meeting officially or through some other venues, so we wouldn't have to have a third and fourth meeting. Because I'm guessing, and I'm not alone in saying that this was, there's a number of sort of outrageous ideas going on here, and I think many of us will have a lot to say about that. And a way to speed it up might be to have a venue that you could establish that would allow us to communicate those thoughts ahead of time.
Well, I think, I think, one, you're welcome, you're welcome to submit, you're welcome to submit any, anything you want in writing, or come to the meeting and, and read something that you have, that's, that's purely acceptable. Another meeting isn't going to, I don't believe is going to have such a long presentation, so there will be a lot more time for everybody's concerns.
My concern is that I heard a lot of idle knows from the applicant tonight. We'll get back to you, maybe yes, maybe no, and on the issue of idling, there was an entirely different answer than was given last fall. So, my concern is that we could go round and round, meeting after meeting, and never get to the root of the issues, and I think it would be helpful if we could convey ahead of time those thoughts to you, so that you could efficiently convey them to the applicant, and they can actually have answers for us next time.
That's fine. If you, if you have anything you want to submit, submit it to Darrell, and he can give me a list of all your questions, and we can go right through them.
Great, thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you.
To that?
Gregor Nalo, I do, I swear. If I want to use the transit stop, and I live on Montfils Road, where do I leave my car?
That was one question I, I brought up when we were talking about, a little bit about parking. There, there was nothing, as far as I could tell, set aside for parking at the transit stop.
So, right now, we're, in this plan, we're eliminating all the park and ride spots in Charlotte Village, correct? Because there are park and ride spots there now.
Sure.
Right. So, then there'll be no park and ride spots in Charlotte.
Not on that particular location. I'm not, I can't confirm there's, there's not some other, or other places, but at that particular location, as far as from what I got from the applicant, I see no...
Right, okay. And my other question is, has there been any air pollution studies done? If there's a, like an idling semi pollutes two and a half times more than a driving semi, and so the impact isn't just noise, it's also air quality if there's cars idling, and right now, there's no, nothing idling there, so the difference between almost nothing and hundreds of cars a day is significant. So, I'm just wondering if that's an issue.
Is the large trucks idling, so I don't know if there's anything in there that says anything about pollution.
No, there's, there's nothing in the, in the zoning bylaws. I mean, it does talk about noise, and it does talk about pollution, but I mean, it doesn't talk about the, you know, directly to idling vehicles.
All right, I'll just keep things moving here. One more question I have is, you know, if I pull in a Mazda's farm stand, I don't expect to find everything that a human being could consume. I expect to find farm products, and I'm just wondering what the source of those products are going to be. Are they going to be like mixed apples and Palmer's maple syrup and bread and butter bread, or is it going to be like a restaurant supply company that supplies the restaurant and the...
That was one reason why we kind of looked at whether a supply list of, kind of a product list.
Right. I mean, it's larger than a lot.
To see what, to see what was planned, because, I mean, as with anything, you, you don't associate everything you can eat or drink from a farm stand.
No. I don't think anybody does. But that's an answer that was given, so I just wanted to be clear.
To be clarified.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, okay, thank you.
Here, Colonel, I do swear. Just to clarify, the park and ride that was just mentioned, currently, there's five spots over there that CCTA leases. It's not a park and ride there currently, so we're not losing a park and ride, because I did talk to CCTA recently, within the last few months, and they literally have two to three people per day that board the bus, but yet, if you look over there on any given day, there's probably eight to 10 cars. So, people are abusing the fact that it is a park and ride, and it is not a park and ride. It's spots over there for CCTA, and you literally have two or three people.
So, we need a park and ride. People using the park and ride.
Right, but there was a, there was, it wasn't in the proposal, but it was mentioned that the, the limitation on the lot coverage eliminated the park and ride spaces that could have been on this parcel.
That is correct.
So, that's something that could have been proposed if it wasn't for the lot coverage at this time.
I'm Abby Fulk, and I just wanted to clarify what, how you define it, and what stage you need to get a petition by 10 or more persons to have interested person status, either for submitting suggestions, questions, suggesting conditions on the five areas that was covered tonight in the presentation, and in order to be able to appeal any decision made by yours or zoning.
Well, everyone that comes, as far as I know, everybody that comes to this meeting and speaks...
And swears themselves in.
And swears themselves in. Is basically considered an interested party.
Yeah, but to that end, you want to sign in on the sign-in sheet.
Okay, so we want a sign-in sheet, and, and we do actually have the beginnings of a petition, but I don't, I could give it to you tonight, or more people might want to sign it.
You can, we're going to continue this, so if you want to bring that to...
Second question is, I was just curious how you decided what town officials or relevant town people to, to interview regarding the, the impact and all, and just the adherence to this, of this proposal to town guidelines and town plan. For example, did you, were the state police interviewed? Were, was the Chittens Hollow Waste District representative interviewed? Was the what? The energy committee, you know, committee, conservation committee? How, how was that decision made? It seems like there are a lot of people serving on town committees and in town...
Well, zoning board doesn't require any of that.
You're talking about the applicant, they did some interviews.
Yes, they did some interviews, so I guess I was told I was to ask the question.
I think it was department heads, was that town department head?
Yeah, it was a department heads.
What hurt the applicant answer?
Yeah.
Sure, Dave Marshall. Yes, we basically approached the town department heads because the statute talks about town services, not underlying committees. There will be a time and place when you get to site plan approval, where input from the conservation board is going to be an integral component or a supporting component for the planning commission's discussion and determination of appropriateness of the work within the property lines of the project.
Okay, so would the town police, they're under contract, would they be considered? A proxy town official, would Chittens Hollow Waste District representative, who covers special waste, hazardous waste, food waste related to this project, be considered a town official?
I guess to throw, to basically perhaps cover that, that's one of the reasons we asked the town administrator to provide some input, so we'll throw Dean under the bus. But, sorry, Dean, but Dean also was very cautious. I mean, he basically said, you know, as things come up, we will address them. So, that's what we will likely respond to as far as further input on those issues.
But can, can I just say that we contacted the people that we thought were appropriate? This is an open process. If you think other people should be contacted and their opinions provided, then, then you're welcome to do that.
Okay, so do I do that by suggestion, or, I mean, written suggestion or right now?
No, no, what I'm saying is, we can't possibly contact everybody in the world to ask them, is there a product, do they have a problem with this project? I would be surprised if Chittens Hollow Waste District would have a problem with a project. They're in the business of...
Or the representative, and I have some input to give.
Okay, so, so if you think we haven't contacted all the people that we should, you're welcome to do that and provide that information to the board.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Tom Nalo, I do solemnly swear. I know this is a very contentious conversation and discussion regarding the town. However, I think all of us need to give some consideration to the property owner and how he has, to a series of circumstances, been placed in an untenable situation in terms of which he continues to pay taxes on a piece of property that is a white elephant for him. And if that's the situation that continues, then I think, as residents of this town, we need to think about him as a resident of this town, who's been living here for many years, and find some constructive way of either reducing the man's tax burden or doing something with this as a town, as a piece of property, whatever idea or ideas are there. But to just say no, to me, is unconscionable. It's reprehensible. Where are we as people? We talk about this from, as, from a company's point of view, as to how much more money they can make. Wow, we got to be a lot more than that. Is that all we are, is about money? About how much it's going to generate? And if so, how much are we going to generate in taxes on this piece of property? How much is it going to bring to the town? What, 2,000, 3,000? Are there going to be exemptions, like there are for the solar farm in Charlotte Heinzberg Row? We really need to, as a town, really think about the impact here, not just to the environment and the town, but how about the property owner? And my last comment, I would strongly give some consideration to something being done about the audio quality. I'm hearing impaired. I don't have a problem with my voice projection, but I do have a problem with hearing. Thank you.
Susan Smith, and I do swear. I'd like to go back to looking at the Middlebury Gas Station and maybe gas stations in Shelburne. As I drive around and I look at these, what, one thing that makes them look acceptable in my point of view is that they don't have huge roofs, canopy... in my point of view, is that they don't have huge, uh, roofs, canopies over the gas stations that are lighted. I worked in Middlebury for years, and I used that gas station, it's very nice. So, um, I think that the canopies are totally inappropriate, and they have, they're light polluting, they're ugly, and it maximizes the whole, uh, project. I don't know why we need to have a two-story building if the second story is phony. Uh, could we have one more that looks like our town hall, a minimal building, or like the gas station in Shelburne, if you go into Shelburne, just small? So I guess that's, that's my point at, at this point.
Should we give the applicants, yes, to, to respond, or have...
Yeah, yeah, Dave wants to respond to, to that at all? Or are you just taking that as a...
The canopy for us is, is very important in, in the business that we're in. Uh, it does a couple of things. First of all, it provides light safety for our patrons. Uh, it also provides us the opportunity to put, uh, proper fire suppression that isn't hanging down in, in the other locations that we talked, that, that were mentioned. There are fire suppression tubes that run all over the place and point away from the pump, and they're really kinda not attractive and, uh, are, are a different format than, than what we prefer to use. So the canopy is important to us.
But there are other options to, to do what you need to do in terms of light safety of cars.
Um, certainly, there are, there are opportunities to put lights on top of poles to lighten the fueling area, uh, and there are, uh, there are, uh, fire suppression systems that don't require to have a canopy. However, it is not as efficient, it is not, uh, as attractive from a, from an architectural standpoint.
Do all your other sites have canopies?
Uh, ninety percent of our, our equipment is covered by a canopy. Uh, also comes down to equipment, um, gas pumps, up to our gas dispensers that are outside in the elements, uh, break down more frequently, has more problems. Um, there's more chance of, of water getting into the dispenser sumps where, uh, which are environmental containment areas, um, that should not have water in them. Um, so there, there are other functions that a canopy serves beyond just, uh, using, use for lights and the fire suppression.
I could be wrong about this, but Middlebury doesn't have canopies, right?
Middlebury does not have canopies.
And so that does work?
I'm, I'm not saying that it is, it won't work. I'm saying it is not desirable from our standpoint.
Hey, you have a question?
I do, I do solemnly swear. Um, two questions. One is, uh, what is the total gallons of water per day potentially gonna be used in somewhere like this that's gonna be having, uh, it's gonna be a, a big restroom and stuff for people, it's gonna be a food prep area? So I don't know if that would go under five as an environmental concern to, to, to water demand, which has been an issue in the town center here for, uh, quite a few years. And I probably don't have the answer to that, but just curious, because it's, it's a lot of water. Uh, two is, in the lighting scheme, it was hard to tell, um, where the lights were, and, you know, 20 feet seems accessible to save money on doubling up on fixtures. Also, underneath the canopy, it wasn't talked about, phony, or types of lights. Um, just gauged based on what I could see, what's total lumens given off between inside and outside light, um, that would sort of give the additive glow to something like this? Because we can talk about the fact that it's a flood or not a floodlight, but cumulatively, um, lumens, lumens and total amount of lights, it's not one fixture, it's 20 fixtures plus underneath the canopy, that I think is gonna help make a decision, um, or help in study that you can do in one of many programs to see what light pollution based on lumens is there. So those are my two questions.
Uh, I'll answer the first one. Um, on the water supply end, uh, the design flows that have been submitted as part of the wastewater permit application is, uh, about 3,200 gallons per day.
So about the light fixtures, it sounded like, one was that you're having a hard time seeing where they were located?
Yeah.
I think part of that is because of the resolution of the screen. Um, even when I was up next to it, you couldn't see the same detail as you could on a full-size sheet. So I was, and also, I couldn't quite hear the end of that question before you flipped over to lumens. Can you...
Uh, just, just, uh, the light fixtures underneath the canopies. You, you focus mostly on the height and type of light on the post, but the fact is, a lot more light at a gas station than you see up and down at seven. Ninety percent of the light seems to be coming from underneath the canopy, not outside in the parking areas?
Yeah, and I, I think it does depend on what's going on at that gas station. Some are smaller, and some are, um, some are bigger. So in this case, you've got a lot more area outside of that, um, canopy, that, and that's why we were talking about those light fixtures. Um, with regards to the, the, underneath the canopy, um, we actually have dimmed those fixtures down from what they can output, so that it becomes a little bit more reasonable in terms of the, the, the amount of light that it produces. Additionally, you don't need as much light in a darker setting to kinda compete with and not look out of place around other brighter lights, so we don't need those fixtures to be emitting at full power. So we've dimmed those down, um, and still retain lights that go onto the fuel dispensers, um, so that cars and trucks that pull in there don't shade themselves out, can see well, and, and be safe. So yes, I understand your concern. There is light being emitted from underneath that canopy, and in order to reduce that for this scenario, we're proposing to dim those fixtures.
So, thank you very much. So on that, on that note, when you talk about, I can put a dimmer in my house and say, hey, kids, keep the lights down, and they're gonna come back and turn it back on. So, so between that, let's say the square footage of, of food that is the commercial farmer's market, you know, stores are always changing things, and they change things in product based on what sells and what doesn't. So as far as a placeholder, let's say 400 square feet that I think I heard as being that place, or dimmable lighter, what does zoning and planning have in place so that, hey, I can tell you're gonna have 400 square feet, not organic local produce, but if it doesn't sell, I know as a retailer, I'm not gonna sell it if I don't make money on it. So what are the, what are the sort of checks and balances in order, as through this process, that if you say it's dimmable, what is the lumen? Because that's gonna tell me what that dimmable setting is. So in order to get these things through the process, I realize certain things can be said, but what is gonna make spaghetti stick to the wall in, in these decisions that, you know, and you can say dimmable, and I don't know what that means? Do you understand what I'm saying? I thi, I think more of just the planning and zoning from the checks and balance. Like, I, I can tell you're gonna carry something in a store, but two weeks later, it doesn't work out, I take it off the shelf, and, but I just put that in there to get through a potential permit.
The question is how are zoning rules enforced in the actual execution of the project?
If they're gonna be said, just to say them, but not enforced, to get through a process, it doesn't, it doesn't really help.
Right. Well, in, in the decision, it'll state the, that, that it would be done according to our lighting standards and what they presented. And that's as, about as strong as the zoning board can get. I mean, on, on the most part, I mean, we could put restrictions on it as a condition, but ultimately, it's up to somebody to say something, and the zoning administrator to investigate and decide whether they're gonna give a notice of violation. That's the process.
We're, we're bound by the town's regulations, presumably, and we're, if we enforce them, then the zoning administrator is in a position of...
Enforcement.
If there is a, a question of...
Whether, whether it goes along with the permit that was, that was, that was given.
But if there's a certain amount of square footage for certain activities within the facility, and then that, and we approved the plan as presented, if that mix changed dramatically, then the zoning administr, and, and someone brought that to the zoning administrator's attention, then they would be in violation. So there is a mechanism, but there also needs to be some specifics presented in the plan to allow that kind of bright line determination as to whether or not they're in compliance or not. That helps.
I'm Anna McCurlan, I swear. Uh, I want to say two things. One is, on the one hand, they're the interest of a large corporation. On the other hand, they're the interest of a small town. The two fit like a fist on an eye, okay? And I remember, I have lived here long enough that I remember Johnson Lumber by Lewis Creek, they wanted to put up 14 fancy houses. We all fought it, and it got scaled down to maybe two or three houses, which is litterable, okay? Somebody years ago wanted to build a convenience store, gas station, and all, north of here, on, still in Inshallah, people fought it. They said it disrupted the whole view. It's beautiful here, okay? And so what I'm saying is, we're a small town, we're trying to keep it small. Uh, this is an interest, it's a convenient place, uh, and it will make a lot of money, and it does not fit us here.
I'm Nate Carr, and, uh, I swear that out. To continue the discussion of the, uh, what occurs if the permitted, um, if the applicant's permit deviates, um, what are the, what penalties can be levied? And, uh, and in the pursuit of profit, would it be more interesting to pay a penalty than it would be to, um, conform to a standard?
Um, what happens is, is if, uh, if a notice of violation was issued, there would be, there, there could be a, a fine imposed, and that notice of, a, a new violation is each day. So if there was a fee of, I'll come up with a random number of $100, it would be, I know it could be more. If a fee of $100 was imposed on a violation, the next day constitutes another violation.
Is there an instance where there's been violations that have carried on, uh, that don't get addressed right away?
That you would have to ask the zoning administrator.
Does anybody know of any instances where, uh, zoning violations occurred and carried on with...
Is your question about fines accumulating?
Or is it just... You know, what's that people ignore? What's that town got to, you know, once you, once you approve, like, a, a use and it deviates from the application?
If you go out of the scope of, of your permit...
Yeah, I am.
What happens is, is you end up getting a violation, you go into environmental court, your permit gets revoked. So you lose that use that, that happened before in Inshallah.
But there have been also instances where there's been violations, and they've been uncorrected for long periods of time.
Yeah, and, and it's not the zoning board's position to do enforcement.
Sure.
It, it, so mostly...
But your opinion could, your decision could be, um, I'm gonna be reasonable, I wanted to say ignored, but you could issue a permit. It could change from what's presented to, you know, and there is a, a penalty and a process, but in, there have been instances where that doesn't get corrected.
There, there are instances where things do not come to the attention of the town, and if, if, if it does come to the attention of the town, it's up to the zoning administrator to enforce those, our permits for the, not only the zoning board, but the planning commission. So it's up to the zoning administrator to issue the permit after, after they've gone through both processes. And, uh, it can go to environmental court, that can, you know, and if the person feels that the zoning administrator made an error, it does come before the zoning board?
Is there been an instance when, um, applicant's corporation has been before, um, you know, uh, a board trying to correct, uh, their use or execution of a, of a permit?
If they wanna change what was approved, they have to start the process over.
I'm asking generally, has RL Valley ever been in a situation where there's been a, um, a determination by a town that they're, um, outside of a, a permit that's been issued?
So that would be your question for RL Valley?
Not that I'm aware of.
I, I think I've represented Valley for 20, more than 20 years, and I'm not a...
I do take that back. In Nansett, Vermont, we had a grand opening in Full Pond Dogs, and it's outside of our permit, and got a hundred dollar fine.
That was before my time.
So that's your, your answer.
And while I'm sworn in, can I read a statement from my son? Do you take, uh, statements from, uh, non-voting, uh, citizens?
Sure.
So, um...
Well, this time it'll last over two hours.
So he didn't last, so he had to go home, 'cause it's bedtime, and what his, um, statement is regarding his bedtime. And so, uh, I quote, "My name is Sawyer Carr, and I'm a sixth grader," and he spelled "grader", not "greater." Sixth grader, but it was on a phone, so, you know. "My name is Sawyer Carr, and I'm a sixth grader at CCS. I live on Churchill Road, right across from the town garage. I'm concerned about the light at night disturbing my sleep. Studies show that kids need at least 10 hours of sleep." That kids need at least 10 hours of sleep, he's missing a comma, "to have a successful day at school. The light from the proposed maple field will be visible from my bedroom all night long. I don't think we need a business on the corner that runs all night long."
That probably led into my question, is why 24 hours?
Yeah, Mason, and I swear, but, um, why 24 hours? Nothing else in Inshallah is up to 24 hours. It just doesn't, it's not consistent with our town.
You're on.
Uh, we are looking at perhaps reducing those hours from 24 hours to something less. So we, we're, we're listening.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions before we continue this to another date?
Can I ask you a good question? Steve Carroll, I swear, so, I'm right next door to you guys, and I think you did yourself a disservice today by not explaining the difference between the commercial farm stand and the outdoor farm stand that you originally wanted to do. People came here, I think, expecting that they'd have a lot of local farmers be able to supply, to sell their goods there. And basically, what it sounds like, and you're not gonna put anything over these people, is you're gonna have a section with a sign-up for Monty, and it could be from anywhere. And I think what people really wanted was that outdoor farm stand that you originally had, had put out there. And I'm guessing, Dave, with the rerouting of the, the traffic flow, that is eliminated?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so that kinda puts you in bad light by not explaining that, to be honest with you.
That's fair.
Couple of notes, this, this has nothing to do with the project, because Route Road does go all the way, it's paved all the way to south of the street thing. You asked about that. You're right, there's no sign there, stop sign, no need one, it's good. And 53-foot tractor trailers come in and out of them, no problem, yeah. And Stuart, uh, diesel, I love diesel pumps, but, uh, no, you asked about diesel pumps.
I didn't talk about it.
Was there any...
No, I'm asking, I was...
Oh, I'm sorry. My friend here talked about it. There's seven trucks across the street that have to drive all the way to Shelburne, to the fire department, you know, a couple times a week to fill up the cell. And I think every BMW SUV is now diesel, so this, this diesel is pretty big to narrow for.
We, I guess, do we have a motion to continue?
Will we continue? Second.
Date time?
Date specific.
Oh, at a, uh, do we have to pick a...
Seven.
You wanna do what Dave suggested, of a co-meeting, just to...
Seven o'clock, on the 14th, to have a... Seven o'clock, on the 14th, to have a... I think we're...
We have a hearing. We're just going to be here long enough to reschedule.
What, Darrell? What's, what's this, you warned the meeting, the proposal, on the 14th for seven o'clock?
But if, if your, if your thing's going to take two minutes, then since times are approximate.
Okay, you think so?
Six forty-five.
We'll do this one at 6:45?
Sorry?
We'll make it at 6:45 on the 14th?
I said that the, in the morning, it says that the meeting starts at seven, so...
Well, start at seven, at least.
Starting morning, starting at seven.
Craig, do you want to do it for the purpose of...
Guys, we're, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta continue this, so if we can't have, can't have the noise.
Do you want to do it for the purpose of setting a...
I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting there.
Okay.
Stuart, are you going to continue this motion, or...
I'm picking a part, I was going to do something.
Seven, seven o'clock, 14th, for the purposes of setting a, a date and time for the next...
Yes, second that one.
Preferably a different, different location.
Yeah, preferably, preferably a different location.
All in favor?
Second? Need a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Five eyes.
Matt had already seconded it.
That's fine, that's fine, thank you, Laura.
What's the relationship between Maple Fields and the Vermont Coffee Company?
We did some experimentation and do sell Vermont Coffee Company at...
So, they're a supplier?
They're a supplier, yes.
Did you a jerk?
We're a jerk.
Yeah.